All right. Good evening. It looks like we have a quorum. I will check in with staff and see if we're ready to begin tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. We are ready.
Perfect. Well, welcome, everybody. Apologies for the delay. We had a previous meeting that went a little long and it was important discussion. So there you have it. But we are here now, and I'm welcoming you all to this joint meeting of the Catari City Council and the successor agency to the former Catari Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. And I'll begin by asking our deputy city clerk if we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Sparks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Here.
Mayor Landman.
And here as well. And next, as always, I'll ask our city manager if he could introduce the staff that are here tonight to help us through the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. So myself, Damian Obed, the manager. We have Kevin Patterson, our deputy city clerk, who you just heard. We have Angela Quarter, our director of administrative services. We have Craig Scott, our director of public work and engineering. We also have John Boxer, our city attorney here tonight, and Noah House, our community development director.
Very good. This takes us to item three in our agenda, which is the pledge of allegiance. And I'll ask the council to join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation
One nation.
Under God, indivisible with liberty and justice
Justice for all.
Thank you. This brings us to item four, which is approval of the minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinance introduced or adopted under this agenda. This is an action item. And we do have two items for minutes tonight, the minutes from our Catari City regular meeting for May twenty-fourth, as well as our closed session from June seventh. So I'll begin by asking my council colleagues if there's any corrections or additions they'd like to make to the minutes. And I'm not seeing any hands go up, so I'll move forward next. So we will, we have attendees tonight, so we'll take this to public comment next, please.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Maria Leon, please go ahead.
Hello. Um, I just, my name is Maria Leon, and I wanted to introduce myself. I was one of the, one of the Catari residents that started the conversation around the mural that was painted in downtown. And a lot has happened since I reached out for the first time and where we stand.
Maria?
Today.
I wonder, I'm sorry, could I interrupt you for just a second? Apologies, and I know this is a mistake because you're new to a council meeting. But if this is a time legally, we're only able to take comments on the minutes. There'll be public comment in just a few minutes, which I think we'd all like to hear from you very much. But unless you had comments specifically about approval of the minutes, this, we're in the wrong space. I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry. Yes, I am new to this. So thank you. I will lower my hand.
It's a complex procedure, and it happens to everybody's new. As a matter of fact, sometimes it happens to those of us who've been around here a while.
Okay, great.
So let's see if we have no further public comment on approval of the minutes. I'll bring it back then, see if I have a motion from the council.
Move to approve the minutes for May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two and June seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Harvey, for the motion. Do I have a second from any of my colleagues?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Sparks. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes.
Mayor Landman.
Yes. All right. So that concludes our minutes. This brings us to announcements, and bear with me, I have a few things I want to read for the benefit of the meeting. And I'll begin with A, which is our meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance of the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item, and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place in the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council, excuse me, may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be construed or perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council members may believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Next, I'm happy to tell you that Mezures supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all agents, and the maintenance of their streets, parks, and public buildings. And you can see details of that on the web, the catari-city.org. And again, I'd like to remind everybody that citizens interested in receiving the city of Catari community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nix by downloading the Everbridge app from either the iOS or the Android App Store, or by simply texting your zip code, nine four nine three one two eight 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 seven seven seven. And finally, like always, we'd like to hear from you. So do feel free to contact the city, contact the city at seven oh seven seven nine two four six zero zero, or through email at info@cataricity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, yes, you can still contact. It's at seven oh seven seven nine two four six eleven. And of course, if you have an emergency, please do contact nine one one. And as always, continue to look for updates on the city's website and our social media channels, which include Facebook, Nixol, Instagram, and Nextdoor. So let's see, that concludes that. And that brings us to item six, which are proclamations. And we do have a proclamation tonight for Juneteenth. And I'll ask the city manager, do we have a representative here tonight at all to comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Believe, I mean, we do. I believe it is Joe in our panelists.
All right. Well, what I'll do first is read the proclamation, then I'd be happy to open it up to them to speak if they'd like. So we'll give them a little forewarning for some public speaking. So let me read this proclamation of the city council of the city of Catari. Whereas on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, nearly nine decades after our nation's founding, and in more than two years after President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, enslaved Americans in Galveston, Texas finally received word that they were free from bondage and recognized for the first time as citizens. And whereas Black Americans came to commemorate Juneteenth with celebrations across the country, building new lives and a new tradition that we honor today. And whereas, in a celebration of freedom, Juneteenth is a day that should be recognized by all Americans. And whereas Juneteenth is a day that we remember the moral stain and the terrible toll of slavery on our country. And whereas Juneteenth is also a day that also reminds us of our incredible capacity to heal, hope, and emerge from our darkest moments with purpose and resolve. Whereas we celebrate the centuries of struggle, courage, and hope that have brought us to this time of progress and possibility, and everyday Americans who have helped make real the ideals of our founding documents for all. And whereas on Juneteenth, we recommit ourselves to the work of equity, equality, and justice. So now therefore be proclaimed that on this fourteenth of June, twenty twenty-two, that the city council of the city of Catari acknowledges and celebrates the emancipation of Black Americans and commits together to eradicate systemic racism that still undermines our founding ideals and collect prosperity. And with that, I'd be happy to open the floor. I will ask if we have a representative here today that would like to speak, just to raise your hand, perhaps. And we'll let the city clerk run that process.
I believe Joe has his hand raised.
Good evening. I'm Drew Sturdivant, and I'm a member of one hundred black men of Sonoma County. We appreciate the mayor and the city council for providing the proclamation honoring Juneteenth. I wanted to tell you just a little bit about our group. We are a nonprofit mentoring group here in the county. We've been here for thirty-three years. We mentor young people, raise money for scholarships, donate scholarships each year. We do educational programs, and we've been doing this in the county, in the county for quite some time. We give out scholarships each and every year. And we are really happy to do that. Mentoring young people, working with them has been very, very enjoyable for us. So we thank you. We thank you for the proclamation. We thank you for this honor, and we'd like to say that we appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Joe. Thank you so much for working out. And I know personally, I want to thank you for all the work you do in the community with mentoring in particular. I will open this to anybody in the council who has a comment or would like to comment. I welcome that at this time. And if not, since we have had some discussion, and opened it to a member of the public to speak, I will open it. Councilmember Sparks, I see your hand. Please go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you very much, Joe, for coming and for telling us a little bit about your organization. I'm interested to learn more about it, and I just appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Hart.
I just wanted to also thank Joe for coming and, and thank you for all the work that you do. It's very important work. And thank you. I know it's not easy work, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And there is a Councilmember Ford.
Joe, did you have something to add?
I'm just going to say that, yes, we do have a website, one hundred black men of Sonoma County. If you're interested in more information, you can log on, read that, and find out more about our group.
Great. And I just wanted to add my thanks for your work for one hundred black men of Sonoma County and say that I'm happy that Catari is recognizing Juneteenth, happy that the federal government has recognized it as a holiday and hope that California gets on board too. Thanks.
All right. So with that, let's just open this very quickly to the public. If we, if we have any other members of the public who would wish to comment.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in with your phone, use star nine. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Thank you. All right. That completes item six and brings us to item seven, which is approval of a final agenda. And I'll ask the city manager tonight if there are any changes to the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council know proposed changes.
All right. Well, this is largely a ministerial action. I noticed it is listed as an action item, so I will just ask to see if there's any members of the public that wish to speak on it.
If you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Thank you. All right. That brings us then to item eight, which is citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. So this is the place to be able to speak. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item or items listed on the consent calendar or any matter that's not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed in the agenda during this period, though. Pursuant to the city council policy, twenty twenty-one dash zero one, common center member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. And the mayor's always may extend the time for a reasonable amount where a disability accommodation has been requested. So with that, I will ask our city clerk if we have any citizens' business tonight, as well as consent calendar comments.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Maria Leon, please go ahead.
Okay. I think. Okay, sorry about that. I guess I already introduced myself. I just, you know, I was a one of the community members that reached out to the city in, in various ways to talk about the mural that was painted in La Plaza downtown. My family and I, we moved to Catari last year, and we love it here. We're, you know, we think it's a beautiful, small city, and I don't have anything else to say about it because so much happened in the last couple of weeks since I first brought it up. And I just wanted to take the time to show up to today's meeting and thank everybody because everybody in the city were, I mean, everybody was so responsive and helpful, and I was just amazed at the way how everything unfolded. So thank you. I just wanted to say that I appreciate it, and I particularly appreciate you taking the time to listen to citizens like myself that have specific comments. So thanks a lot. That's all I wanted to say.
Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. Well, thank you. So we'll bring that back then.
I'm sorry, Mayor Landman. There's, there's one more that just came in. Sorry to interrupt.
That's all right. Let's get that comment in.
Terry Mizanti, please go ahead.
Hi.
She no longer shows as talking permitted.
There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you're good.
Hi, I'm Terry Mizani, resident of Catari, and I, my comment has to concern the scheduled water and sewer rate increase. The residents of Catari were sent a letter in early May, giving us the opportunity, if we opposed it, to send back that letter opposing it. And I am interested in knowing how many return letters or comments you got total and what the sentiment was of the residents of Catari for raising our, our base water and sewer rates. Hello.
Ms. Mizanti, the way these council meetings work, we don't get to reply direct to you in a back and forth in questions. We're going to listen to the rest of the public citizens' business tonight, and then I will ask the city manager to speak afterwards. So hang on just a second, okay? Thank you. All right. Now I'll ask our deputy city clerk if we have any further public comments.
That is all for public comment at this time. Thank you, Mayor Landman.
All right. I'll bring it back to the council. I wonder if it would be appropriate, Mr. Obed. We will be discussing this shortly, but just to mention the number of protests that we have received to date. I believe we're tracking that.
Yeah, you are. You are correct. We are going to be discussing this later, and we'll go over that later on that item. But in terms of the mail-in protests, I believe the, the deputy city clerk has the final number, but I believe it was around one hundred and sixty.
One hundred and sixty. All right. So we're here, we're hearing about one hundred and sixty protests so far today. But we haven't got to that agenda item yet, so who knows? All right. So this brings us then to the consent calendar. So let's see, we did that. No, we haven't done that. Forgive me. So I think I am looking, we have two items on consent, which is calling for our November eighth election, as well as the cancellation of our regular council meeting for July twelfth and December twenty-seventh in twenty twenty-two. So I'll ask again if nobody wishes to pull this, if I'll be looking for a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Harvey. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Sparks. All right. If we could have a roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes.
Mayor Landman.
And that's a yes for me as well. All right. Thank you, council. This brings us to item number ten. This is direction on future agenda items. So I'll ask my colleagues if we have any direction on future agenda items tonight. I'm not seeing any hands. I'm seeing some shaking heads. I will volunteer that I did ask the city manager if we could weigh in and support potentially for a California Senate bill, nine forty. I was told that there was no staff impact indicated, but we weren't able to make it for this meeting, so we will likely see this at our next meeting. Without going into it in great detail, it basically removes a loophole that has blocked rent protection for many mobile home park units. This was a resent from one of our mobile home residents here in town. And after our earlier meeting today, I noticed it might actually fit into some of our reporting elements for our housing elements. So perhaps that's something as well. But with that, then that completes direction in the future agenda items. This brings us then to public hearings. We have two tonight. And our first is the Catari Station's apartment projects. This is eleven A, and I'll ask for our staff presentation, please.
Thank you, Mayor Lammon. This is Noah House, community development director. I'll just wait briefly while the slides get up. But yeah, the item before the council tonight is consideration of a resolution to approve design review and a density bonus. And that's the applicant's presentation. Mr. Elliott will be presenting after I do. So that's the one we just did, I think, Kevin. There we go. Thank you, sir. And I'll probably ask you to advance the slides as well, but getting into it, we'll just go to the next slide. The item before the council this evening, as I mentioned, is a consideration of resolution for design review and a density bonus to allow the construction of ninety-eight multifamily units and approximately fifty-five hundred square feet of commercial space and required parking on three vacant parcels totaling about two and a half acres in the Centerra Way specific plan. About twenty of those ninety-eight units would be restricted as affordable housing in the current proposal. Additionally, the project includes the construction of a half acre park and a thirty-one space public parking lot. And then also the extension of Depot Way and some other improvements on Centerra to address some of the current parking challenges that the residents over there are facing. And the entitlements, as I mentioned, are design review and a density bonus. And one interesting thing is we used to require a use permit as the mechanism to grant a density bonus. Some of the state law changes that we've been talking about have actually precluded cities from doing that. So while we do still have to make the findings to grant it, we cannot use the use permit as the mechanism. So go to the next slide. This slide is intended to highlight the zoning and general plan designation for the property. So here you see kind of the surrounding properties. It's off of, it's on Centerra Way. The pink property there is the Centerra Way specific plan, and Kevin, if you'll advance the slide one more time, it'll highlight the three parcels that are proposed for the apartment project. The properties just to the north of those are where the park and parking lot would be constructed. Then you could see that it's solidly surrounded by Centerra Way zoning and then kind of in an area of light or low density and medium density housing designation with some commercial. Those are the red parcels on East Catari, and we'll go to the next slide. This one shows an aerial photograph of the site, just to give some context. And Kevin, if you advance it once, then it'll highlight the properties proposed for the apartment development. And then the second advancement will highlight the areas proposing to build the park and the parking lot, and then an additional advance will show improvements along Centerra that are proposed to be made. Currently, the width of Centerra is so narrow that the fire marshal has not allowed overnight parking to occur because they think that that's when, you know, they're most likely to have to respond to an emergency is in the evening when everyone's home and the street would be most congested, and they're really concerned about being able to get their emergency equipment there. This project has been conditioned to reconfigure that, widen the street even off-site down in front of the park and adjacent development to allow parking to occur, and that would allow the removal of the no overnight parking prohibition in that area, which has been the number one concern we've heard through this, throughout this, my tenure here at the city. And if you advance it one more time, it's worth highlighting that there's also an emergency vehicle access easement that was recorded across the city on parcel, just to give another way to get out to East Catari. It's not ideal because it is right in the same vicinity as Centerra, but it does provide a secondary access point, should it be needed. We'll go to the next slide. So some background, there's a lot more of it in the staff report, but the Centerra Way specific plan was adopted in March of two thousand and one. And in October of two thousand and sixteen, that a seventy-four unit project was approved here. There was multiple extensions granted through that to keep the project alive, but the property owner and applicant at that time and since has deemed that project to not be commercially viable. The council recall as an, as a effort to try to find a way to make that project viable, that the owner engaged with Bridge Housing to build the project as a hundred percent affordable. Bridge spent a lot of time with us in the council. And after about a year worth of effort, they also could not find a way to make that seventy-four unit project pencil, even with their kind of unique financing structure that is subject to affordable housing. So in June of last year, a new project was submitted, essentially requesting ninety-eight units with about twenty of them affordable, still proposing to build all the public benefit and public improvements that were originally in the entitlement. As a part of that process, we sent a notice to the neighbors. We held neighborhood meeting. We put onsite notification signage, and this is just kind of in some of those engagement efforts that we were talking about in the last meeting, in the four o'clock housing element meeting. We will be seeking to expand how much we engage with residents when there's a large project coming through. The most frustrating thing that I've heard is, you know, when people don't know anything about it until it's going for a decision. That's very frustrating to residents. So staff is going to prioritize expanding that for all of our larger projects, and we really use this one as a test case, and we hope that the neighborhood feels that we were successful. And last month, in May, this project was before the commission, they reviewed it, and they voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the requested entitlements. So we'll go to the next slide. Just really quickly to touch on the design, I know Mr. Elliott wants to speak to this a little bit more, but just see, it's proposed in three separate buildings, fronting onto Centerra and then onto the new public park and new parking lot. And then there in the top left corner of the slide is the Depot Way connection. So that's a public street extension next to a new public parking lot, next to a new public park, all that this project will build before it gets onto its private development, has the parking on site, and then additional improvements further down Centerra to widen the road out, as we talked about. Go to the next slide. These are the elevations. The really, the only thing that changes, a few of the balconies were proposed to be removed. Essentially, the applicant really wanted to respect the amount of time that went into the previous review of this design, and so they are essentially just reconfiguring the internal elements of the, of the building. What that did, though, is it moved some of the door and window locations internally and required the removal of some of those balconies. Balconies are also a relatively high dollar item for development. And so that's part of how they are proposing to make the project more commercially viable, financially viable. And then there are some proposed changes to the siding and, and design materials for the commercial portion of the project here, shown in that maroon color, just to further delineate it from the residential, and staff's fully supportive of those changes. And we'll go to the next slide. It's just a rendering to try to highlight kind of the design. And from this standpoint, it should pretty much mirror what the past project looked like when the council saw that previously. So now we'll get into the analysis a little bit. The general plan analysis, as identified in the staff report, there's a number of policies that this project implements. This slide just tries to summarize those, but we do seek to have a mix of uses in specific plan areas. We do want to provide adequate housing or land for recreational uses, sorry for the typo. We want to accommodate viable housing sites at a range of income levels, encourage infill development, provide some incentives for affordable housing, and provide density bonuses to projects that are eligible. provide some incentives for affordable housing and provide density bonuses to projects that are eligible. And as identified in the staff report, staff does find that this project implements those policies and a few others that are also summarized in the report. And we'll go to the next slide. So Santara Way specific plan is kind of a unique land use document in that it kind of essentially provides zoning level development rules. But a specific plan is really a portion of a general plan. But to get into some of the specifics, this is in an office mixed use area. The specific plan was written about twenty years ago when the North Bay was really seen as a blossoming telecom hub. That maybe hasn't come to fruition as much as people were envisioning, but so the plan did seek to have a lot of office and commercial development in this area, but that portion hasn't come to fruition as much. Residential obviously is critical to any community in our area these days. But so there's a lot of specifics like seventy percent residential, thirty percent commercial. These are maximums. There's floor ratios, zero foot setbacks. We really wanted some of that new urbanist development perspective where the streets are right at the back of the sidewalk. Has height limits and also story limitations. And then parking is specifically prescribed in the Santaro Way specific plan. It's different than the other portions of the city. One space for one bedroom, one and a half space for two bedroom, and one and three quarter spaces for three bedrooms. A lot of the residents have have expressed that that's one of the main concerns with the current plan is it just doesn't anticipate how parking actually gets used. And some of the folks who have garages may not use that, so then it pushes them out to the street. And then one of the the benefits, I think, is it is this Santara Way's plan actually has a decent amount of commercial parking required, which when you have mixed use, then that parking can actually flex and serve the commercial buildings during the day when people are gone and then allow some residents to park there at night. So there are some commercial parking spaces built into this plan, and we'll talk about that. So staff finds that the project meets all of the the Santara Way specific plan development criteria, except in the areas where concessions or incentives are being requested, and those are identified in the staff report. We'll talk about them briefly. We'll go to the next slide. So under density bonus law, well, essentially, the current law anticipates and sets rules for up to a fifty percent density bonus. And so under those rules, fifty percent would be a seventy-two unit project. But the, well, and I will say, and the use of a density bonus entitles the applicant to certain concessions and incentives. And also actually has a reduced parking rate that came out to some of the newer state laws, and this project is not proposing to use that. They're they're proposing to use the Santaro's specific plan parking, even though they could have requested a few extra spaces be removed, and they did not do that. The details of that are outlined in the staff report. But state law and our code actually allow the city council and other jurisdictions to grant additional units beyond that fifty percent density bonus. And that's what this the application is requesting. It's it's essentially asking for ninety-eight units where the base zone there is forty-eight. But interestingly, while the specific plan residential component would only allow forty-eight units here, it did actually anticipate a lot more development because it anticipated over two hundred thousand square feet of commercial space to be also developed along this area. So while the residential density is essentially being maximized by this request, when you really look at the impacts of development, it's it's kind of a misnomer because it doesn't kind of recognize the fact that a significant amount of office and other commercial square footage was planned for this neighborhood as well. But it's worth highlighting too that, as I mentioned, the applicant really made a significant effort to not change the design of either the architecture or the site plan with the previously approved project. And it's generally been maintained. We'll go to the next slide. So one of the unique requests coming out of this application, with the exception of a couple additional concessions and incentives, the previous project was granted several, and those are just carried through, no changes. But three new requests were made. They're identified as number seven through ten. So I guess that's four more. I'm sorry, seven through ten in the staff report. Minor setback changes of a couple feet just to allow some of the trash enclosures, which are now larger under new state laws, to be meant. Decrease the amount of private open space because of those reductions of the balconies. And also as a nod to the public park that's being built by this project directly next door. The applicant is requesting that the city council defer collection of impact fees from building permit issuance, which is normally when it happens, to occupancy. And the idea behind that is a lot of the construction financing is a higher interest rate. So most development projects actually have to pay their impact fees out of that higher interest rate financing and carry that through the cost of construction until they refinance it into a more permanent kind of mortgage. If we would allow the deferral of that collection to occur occupancy, then essentially they that would reduce their overall construction cost financing that they would have to carry through the life of the construction, allow it to just fold it into the more mortgage or typical financing. And then they're also requesting that the city council and the city cover the cost of the impact fees for very low and low income units in the project with the housing fund. And so, you know, as we talked about, this project just really has struggled to be commercially viable. They and they identified that the real drag on some of the the long term financing and and can cost of the project is those very low and low income units because you cost that out over the life of the project. And so they're saying if the city can help with the upfront costs of that by covering the impact fees of those units, then that will help the project be more commercially viable. We'll get all the public benefits of the the low income units and the public infrastructure that they're building. And so that's the one of the other requests. Staff, right now, the hard number of that has not been set because the impact fees are based on square footage and but we did cost it out with an estimate. It's about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, assuming about twenty-five thousand dollars per unit at eleven units. If the council chooses to support that, then that would be memorialized in the affordable housing agreement, and that'd be brought back to the council for ultimate approval, and you'd see the real total number. We'll go to the next slide. Getting into some of the parking, per the Santaro specific plan, one hundred and thirty-eight units or one hundred and thirty-eight spaces are required, and that includes eighteen of spaces for the commercial, which staff sees as kind of flex space available in the evening in theory for residents to park in. And the project is proposing one hundred and ninety-eight total spaces. And we'll get to the next slide, and it shows the location of those. Oh, I'm sorry. This is the analysis how we got there. So this is onsite, reconfiguring the parking on Santaro, building some new on-street spaces with the extension of Depot Way, the new community parking lot, which will serve the the smart station, totals one hundred and ninety-seven. Then the widening of Santaro down the street removes thirty-two, so total net parking of one hundred and sixty-five. But this project only needs one hundred and thirty-eight. So the city and the community over there, the neighborhood benefits from a net of twenty-eight seven additional parking spaces that this project would construct. And we'll go to the next slide. And this just shows the location of those. Forty-four along the street, thirty-one in the in the new parking lot, sixteen along the depot way extension, and a hundred and six onsite. Go to the next slide. So there's some sequoia analysis. This project is found to qualify for both an infill exemption and be in keeping with the Santaro Way specific plan. As we talked about, even though the plan, this is kind of maxing out the residential unit count at ninety-eight that the plan anticipated. The environmental analysis really anticipated a lot more development because it had that huge component, the commercial component. Very little of that has actually been built. And then we had the applicant do some subsequent new vibration noise, air quality and traffic and greenhouse gas studies to support that. There were no new impacts associated with adding that increased unit count, and those supported that. I will say there is a little bit of confusing information in the sequoia analysis that was attached because it references this five-year term that and you can only use one of these exemptions if you're relying also on the general plan EIR, and that has to be within five years. We're not solely relying on that. And so that was a little bit of a misinformed element of the of the report, and I apologize. We'll go to the next slide. We had a large number of public comments, letters in response to the notice of application. Thirteen letters came in, one phone call. We also in our neighborhood meeting in April had four folks show up. A majority of those were expressing concerns of the project and essentially were opposed to it, primarily due to the existing parking challenges we faced out there. When we were in the neighborhood meeting, the four attendees, you know, we had a time to have a conversation with them and really explain kind of the cost benefit of of this project being improved versus the current situation and how that parking could get solved. And generally, people left, I think, those four folks left understanding that this project would probably ultimately reduce some of their parking challenges for their neighborhood. But the number of comments were received in writing did express concerns and were essentially opposed because of that. There it is worth noting that the conditions of approval, should the project be approved, require a parking management plan, widening of Santaro and the evacuation be evacuation route be created. And if all of those happen, the neighbors have to be a part of that conversation, the city and all the other stakeholders, and then night parking could be allowed, and that's confirmed with the fire marshal. So given that, we'll go to the next slide. It's recommended by the Community Development Department and the Planning Commission that the city council approved design review and the density bonus for the study station and projects, consortiumy station apartment project, allowing ninety-eight units, fifty-five hundred square feet of commercial space, a half acre park, and a new parking lot for the city. And available for questions, but the applicant also has a presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. House. Unless the council feels differently, I'd like to jump and let the development team go ahead and do that presentation. Does that sound okay to the council? I'll look to see if I see any hands go up. I've seen some thumbs up. All right, with that all, hand the floor to Mr. Rudolph's team.
I'm going to ask Doug Elliott, who's partnering with us on this project, to walk through his screens. I'm here to answer any kind of financial questions that might come up after Doug's presentation. So Doug, you're on.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and and council members for the opportunity to present this. I mean, it's been a long road getting to this point. I would like to do a lot of what I have to present has already been reviewed in the in the staff presentation, but I'd like to hit some of the highlights of it. And I'd also like to thank staff for the effort for working with us to get to this point. It's been a difficult and challenging project to try to reconfigure, and I really appreciate the the spirit and the professionalism of staff working with us. So thank you. So basically, the this is a reconfiguration of a project that doesn't work financially. The project was approved in two thousand sixteen. In the ensuing years, we had probably one of the most robust housing markets and almost zero interest rate environment we've had in a long time. And it didn't work. And because the number of units and the bedroom sizes did not make it economically viable project. The cost to build it exceeded its value in when completed. So when I was involved, I've been a director at EAH Housing for over thirty years, and I've had a lot of experience doing affordable housing. We've done about eighty, eighty-four hundred units over a hundred and six properties. We have twenty-five thousand residents. And so I've done that as a pro bono work, and I've also been a private developer. I've done two projects in Katari prior to this one. One right next door at Preen Way and one just down the street across from the Chevron Station where projects are entitled. So the goal here was to take the existing buildings as designed and reconfigure them so we'd have smaller units of smaller bedroom counts. That would make the project be smaller bedroom units, ultimately allow for more units and increase the overall value of the project. Doing that, we kept the buildings the same. We kept the footprint the same. The site plan hasn't changed. By the way, I want to introduce Dave Brown, our civil engineer from Adobe is here with us. And if questions come about infrastructure, he's the expert to answer those. So thanks for joining us, Dave. The reduction of the balconies is one of the changes because as we changed the units, the fenestration of the building was modified, and so we had to move some of the balconies. There's also some cost savings and the modifications to the commercial furniture, as noted, we wanted to differentiate it from the residential to make it more viable. Next slide, please. So again, my background is I've been a private developer in the Bay Area for to be primarily residential. I've been now thirty years with EAH as a director, and I've done two other projects in Katari, the Preen Way and the six ninety-six East Katari. Next. So you all know where this slide is. So next, please. And this slide is is the scenario, and it shows more or less the the connection of things, starting the left, there's the city-owned mixed-use site across which there'll be an EVA that will allow access to East Katari Avenue, which will be constructed as an expense of the site. There's the smart station lot. There'll be new parking in the blue, the community park, this project site. You can see phase one, and then the future undeveloped area of Santaroway across at the end and across the street. Next slide. And so the area of this project approval is this area shown here. That's where the new project in the public infrastructure improvements will be. Next, please. So again, this is a site plan that you've seen of the site. The footprint is identical. We don't even have to change the civil engineering plans to accomplish the project. The changes are within the walls of the building. And you can see the EVA on the left side of the screen. Can you see my cursor on this? Probably not. No, it's okay. You can see on the left of the screen, there's an EVA that is will be creating, and then it'll go across the city lot to give a secondary emergency evacuation and emergency vehicle access. It's part of the route. Next. The primary entry off of Santaro Way is shown with this arrow. And so we've maintained the same architecture of the building. We haven't changed it with the exception of modifying some of the balconies and making the commercial frontage read more like a commercial frontage rather than residential units. Next. So this points out some awnings and some changes to those elevations. Next. And that shows some of the balcony revisions due to the fenestration changes. Next. So the unit mix as approved is seventy-four units and one hundred and eighty-one parking with six one-bedrooms, forty-one twos and twenty-seven threes. Eighteen point nine percent of the total units are affordable. And forty-one per six percent of the base density. Next slide, please. So again, we want to maintain the identical site plan, the same buildings. Reconfiguration is occurring inside with ninety-eight units where we go to fifty-eight ones, thirty-three twos and seven threes. Next. So this is a simple chart showing have this have the changes from the current mix to the revised mixed show where you can see this very small in the current of of one bedrooms, and then I was predominantly one bedrooms in the second mixed. And a and a smaller amount of three bedrooms versus it was a significant amount previously. Next. This is just a another version of the parking analysis that shows all the all the new spaces. What will happen along Santaro Way is we will build parking all along the frontage of Santaro Way, and we will widen Santaro Way back when this was originally approved, making streets narrow was part of a it was a sort of a vogue, thinking that traffic calming was going to be a better way of managing traffic. It was part of the new orbitism doctrine, and it really hasn't worked out as well as thought. And fire marshals particularly were and civil engineers didn't applaud that street traffic calming. So we're going to correct that. And that has a pretty big impact because right now, one of the biggest things we heard from the neighbors is their frustration and not being able to park overnight. And that's just from a day-to-day living situation. That's untenable. You can't leave your, there's not enough parking. You can't leave your park. So this project will relieve that situation by widening the road and and providing, allowing the fire department to allow private, private, proper access and proper protection. So that's a that's a really big benefit, and that's built into this project. And it's a part of the project cost. It's roughly there's almost five hundred thousand dollars of of infrastructure towards that end. Next site, next slide. So the increase, the benefits to the immediate neighborhood are we're creating a hundred and ninety-seven parking places in aggregate, and the analysis showed the net increase to parking. We did not ask for a parking concession on this project, which would have been one of the concessions that the density bonus would have provided for us because that was the key issue to this community. And that's the key issue. Every development has to look at the, it has to look as an infill to what its impacts are. And so we went to, you know, we looked at that and said, we do not want to impact negatively impact the parking situation in the neighborhood. We want to positively impact it, and we want the neighborhood to support this project. And I believe that, and we did have two meetings, the community meeting, and then a presentation to the HOA followed that. And I believe that the consensus, I can't speak for the HOA, was that they realized that the benefits And I believe that the consensus, I can't speak for the HOA, was that they realized that the benefits of this project, their their parking situation will be better with this project than without it. And a condition of the staff uh, report is to that we will have to have a parking management plan. Which will um, compel the apartment owners across the people across the street and us to work out a plan that makes much better sense to manage the parking resource. Uh, more effectively, which is something that I think will really also help them. So that's a benefit. Um, we improve fire protection, public safety by creating an EVA. And by widening the road. Uh, interestingly enough, even though the units go from seventy four to ninety eight, we actually reduced the number of bedrooms in this configuration by twenty five. In our experience, um, with about eighty four hundred units at EAH, we've learned that bedrooms roughly equate to population. Not exactly, but twenty five less bedrooms will mean not necessarily twenty five less people, but definitely. A reduction in the overall population of of the of the project there. The less residents, the less demand for parking. So even ninety eight units is twenty five less bedrooms. That's less people who are going to be competing for parking spaces and less people having trip units in and out. So the project will be less impactful as currently designed, as proposed as than is currently designed. The other issue is that sometimes it makes sense for a three bedroom unit to be used by three or four college students as a dorm. Is they divide the cost of the three bedroom by three or four people, and it's a lot cheaper than renting a single unit or two people sharing one. So what ends up happening around uh, universities is you see a lot of three bedroom units becoming ad hoc dorms. And it's very hard to control that. And that was another um, impact that was articulated very strongly during the first approval. And they were very concerned about that. So by moving this, moving the three bedrooms out and doing predominantly ones and twos, that that risk is mitigated. And it just doesn't, it's not practical to do that for them. Um, and then we're providing a community park and neighborhood serving uh, commercial space. Next. Um, on a community basis, um, we're providing. Entry level housing, smaller units are one bedrooms average about six hundred and fifty square feet. Smaller one bedroom units will be priced at the lowest entry level price point for new rental projects. The more affordable by design, the more opportunity there is for the workforce to live where they work. And that's been a a guiding principle in a lot of the developments we've worked on. That you can, you can house your public safety workers, you can house your city employees, you can house your teachers, you can house a lot of the people who live in the community. Es- especially at the beginning of their careers by creating smaller units that are more affordable close to work. So this is really what infill housing is about. And it's also transit oriented development, even though this is not an urban location. People are close to the, it's you're being built on the train station. And that's where you want to have the highest number of entry level units is next to transportation hubs. Um, it increases the permanently affordable housing. Um, I have a great deal of respect. I've worked collaboratively with Bridge over the thirty years. We, they're friendly competitors of EAH, about at the same scale. And um, if anybody could put it together, they could put it together as affordable project and they couldn't. Because the money just isn't there to do it. So by, this is in some ways a public private partnership. Because what we're doing is we're using the changes in this project to make it financially viable, so we can actually deliver. The affordable housing with the with a minimal subsidy from the city to make it work. Um, I'm sure you're all aware of the regional housing needs, the arena assessment issues. And uh, those have been uh, pretty controversial of latest. The state has gotten quite uh. Enthusiastic about about creating more housing. And um, as the state tends to do, they often use a sledgehammer instead of a tack hammer when they're trying to accomplish things. And uh, so the Rena requirements, uh, this will go help towards the Rena requirements, in particularly with uh, delivering some very low income units. They provide, we're, we're still providing the community park. That was in in the original proposal, no change on that, this community space. And ultimately, the impact fees to the city will be in the range of roughly two million dollars um, for the market rate units. And that's, that's not a small in piece of uh, income for the city ultimately. And then we'll be using best practices in terms of environmentally sound construction uh, in the project. Next. Um, so I understand affordable housing is really a big issue. We're asking for more density and, you know, reasonable questions. Well, what are we getting in relationship to what we're giving? First of all, what we're getting is a project that actually can be realized, that can be built. Um, that's number one. Otherwise, all these other approvals are basically just a piece of paper in a drawer. They're never gonna get built as currently entitled in the last six years has shown that. The base, the density bonuses as as shown in Noah's slide are basically forty eight units is the base, and everything's calculated for the density bonus off the base. With with eight units of very low, two units of low and ten units of moderate income, that would be twenty affordable units. We had proposed to do nineteen initially, and um, we've been uh. Encouraged to try to round that up to twenty if we did more more moderates. And uh, reluctantly, we've uh, we will try to accommodate that. And that gets us to twenty four, twenty point four percent of affordable uh, of units affordable for the overall project. Which is a forty one percent increase over the base. And the key is the eight very low income units. Previously, you had five. That's a sixty percent increase in very low income units. And as you well know, uh, very low income units were the significantly more expensive to provide than low incomes and far more than moderates. So those are the hardest units to do without subsidy. And this project is delivering that, and that will go, I'm sure as you go through the Rena process, the filling up the very low income. You know, bucket in that process is gonna be the most challenging. And so this goes a long way towards that. Next. In affordable finance, just as a quick overview, typically right now, when a when an affordable housing company looks at at a a site. The the rough number in the North Bay is about six hundred thousand a unit to construct affordable housing, closer to eight in the urban areas. So if we were, this were to be built as, uh, if these twenty units were to be looked at as a standalone affordable project, it'd be roughly twenty million dollars, twelve million dollars. Um, in construction, the way this would be financed is normally you you are able, and there's two different kinds of tax credits. But this project would qualify for the uh, tax credits that would deliver fifty percent of the project cost as equity. And that's the foundation of the of the of the capital. The next, the next fifty percent is provided roughly one third by the state and two thirds by the local, by the cities. So in order for the city to achieve uh. This project of twenty units, they would have to make a contribution of roughly two hundred and ten thousand dollars per unit. To see this happen or four point two million dollar contribution, which exceeds the city's capacity in their housing trust fund. And the state can't make up the difference, although I think they have the capacity, they don't have the will to do that. And so what you end up with is a a pretty big number and it just doesn't get built. In this case, we're using the reconfiguration of the units to make the more valuable one bedrooms and two bedrooms versus three bedrooms, which are less impactful to the local community. But they also help create an internal subsidy so that we can actually afford to deliver the affordable units. And in this case, we've requested a two hundred and seventy five thousand dollar concession impact fees, which is the equivalent of paying thirteen thousand a door. Instead of two hundred and ten thousand a door for affordable units. And if you discount the moderates and say, well, moderate incomes really shouldn't be subsidized, which was a conversation we've had. Um, then you can say, well, then you're spending twenty seven five per door in this subsidy request versus two hundred and ten thousand. This would probably set a record for um, cost per door. Benefit, cost benefit for any city in the North Bay that I've ever seen. So this would be uh, this would be very impactful from a standpoint of affordable housing and a pretty big bang for the buck. Next slide. I want to just talk a little bit about our philosophy and how we approach the project. I've always worked on a community based approach to the projects. Every project I've ever attempted to do has started with a dialogue with the community. And started there and it ended there. It, and I've actually always, every project that I've done has been, has been approved. Uh, because of that approach. We didn't come in here, you know, what's what's happened now is, as you know, this, we haven't had enough housing production in the state. And there's a housing crisis. So the state has passed a lot of legislation that basically takes the authority away from the local government, from the, from you as council members and from the community who you serve. And put it in the hands of a set of regulations. And um, you know, it's the pendulum has swung to a direction that makes this, makes housing more transactional. And we didn't take that approach. We took the approach of what will, what works within this community, what works within the neighborhood, what's going to be a long term asset for this, for this Santero Way specific plan area. And that's why we didn't ask for any concessions on the parking, and we're exceeding the parking requirement consistently. We've exceeded the affordable housing requirement of fifteen percent. We didn't ask for concessions, and most developers will ask for an in lieu payment instead of actually building the affordable units. I've never done that, and it's not, it's against my philosophy. Uh, we are actually gonna build these units. Um, uh, these are big things. These are not just insignificant little side notes. This is really substantive to what we're proposing here. And this is really why I believe this should have enthusiastic support for this. Um, we, and we did make a sincere and 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 concerted effort to engage with the community and listen to them. We were not required to do that, but we did that because it's the, we think it's responsible way to develop. Um, with this, the project is designed to mitigate and address the concerns, and it's a positive impact to the neighborhood. Project supports the goals of the general plan, specific goals and larger macro goals. And it provides more transit oriented development in areas designed and zone for development versus greenfield development. And it, there, these revisions allow a project that doesn't work. In one of the best markets we've ever had in the last five years, with the almost zero interest rate environment, to actually be realized. And that's um, pretty much the recap. So with that, um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Elliott, and thanks staff for that. And I am sure council will have some questions, so let's go right to that. And I'll ask my colleagues who'd like to lead off, Mr. Ford. I saw your hand first.
Thanks, my man.
Followed by Vice Mayor Harvey.
And thanks to staff and Doug for the presentations. So a couple of questions, uh, what's the, what's the long term management of the, of the project? Do you keep, does the Coleman Group keep them? What's and and manage them as rentals in the long run?
Or yeah, it's it's the projects like this are managed by the developer. So as a developer of the project, we'd be managed sometime, we typically work with the third party management company. Um, someone who has a a presence in the area and is managing other apartments in there.
And I know this isn't a condition, but I'm just making, I, so it's not the intent of the Coleman Group to build it and sell it.
No, well, the intent is to build it. Uh, we will probably have a joint venture partner as a builder partner on this, who is a production apartment builder to do this. And they will be the the primary builder.
Right, right, builder. I I'm thinking long term, the the intent of the, the of your group is to hold it.
If we can, yes, that's our goal, is to build and hold it, but it, you know, we can't control all the financial. Outcomes are gonna be in the capital markets are are in flux right now. But the idea is to get this project built, and um, we may find a third party who wants to take it, take contr- complete control of the project and manage it. Um, the Coleman Group and myself won't be involved, or we may be involved. That's yet to be determined. Project won't change though, because the conditions of approval and the plans will be what are approved tonight.
Sure. There's a question for staff. Sometimes when we've talked about Rena numbers, Noah, we, we talk about the possibility of getting credit on Rena numbers for affordable by design places. Are any of these gonna give us a shot at any even moderate credit?
So I do speculating, so. HCD allows us to, if we can demonstrate that we have units that are renting at affordable levels, then we're allowed to count those. Uh, the likelihood of that happening at a brand new development that includes a ton of. Essentially, public benefit that the costs of which need to be recouped by the market rate rents. Uh, you know, I I don't, not likely with this project.
Okay, thanks. And um. Last question also for you, Noah, is, um, can you clarify the nineteen versus twenty affordable? Um, I obviously am interested in every unit we can get. So I just need a little clarity, because you said nineteen or twenty and Doug said.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, I was anticipating that, I mean, I've been working with a developer for probably a year now, and this is on this project and with Mr. Colvin and and um. Mr. Rudolph since I was hired. Uh, and I was anticipating the council would like to have some input into uh, the affordability, and so it's listed as an approximate. Um, because I knew there was gonna be some conversation about it. And I I did push the developer a bit to get to twenty, you know, uh, but. So it's listed as twenty, they've agreed to the numbers that uh, Mr. Elliott presented. Uh, and that's what would be conditioned if the council moved forward.
Okay, um, actually, I I do have a couple more for you. So um, a little clarity on the modifications to Santero Way south of the project. I think you said the plan was to widen and thus remove the no nighttime parking. The staff report says it's to remove the parking spaces in order to create.
That's correct. So it does actually move, there's some bulge outs that that get removed to allow full flow. And then those parking spaces in front of the park are eliminated in favor of shifting them further. Uh, that would be north along Santero.
Okay. Um, and I assume that the affordable units consistent with our inclusionary requirement have to be a mix of unit types. It can't all be the one bedrooms.
Correct.
Okay, thanks. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Vice Mayor Harvey, please go ahead.
Um, questions right now, and then I will, after public comment, have some um. Other comments. Um, let's see. So you talked about how many units, uh, how many balconies were removed? But it's hard for me to tell, so how many balconies are left? Do you?
I I think, I think roughly twenty or twenty two are left.
Okay.
So it's roughly about half.
Half, okay, all right, that 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 helps. Um. So can you help me with? Why? A low and very low unit costs more to build?
Doesn't cost more to build a low or very low income unit. They cost the exact same as the market rate units. What costs, the cost is that the value of the project is reduced by. Uh, more dramatically by a very low income than by a low income. Because the rent for a very low income is significantly below market rate. And apartment projects are financed based on their value, and their value is determined by looking at their net operating income out of their cash flow. And so if the cash flow of a apartment project, and these, the, all the units are rebuilt identically and managed identically with the same amenities. They're not sequestered off as separate affordable units. They are just integrated into the project. But the rent is reduced significantly, meaning the cash flow of the finished apartment is reduced, which means that there's less value to the project in the capital market. And it's significant, and that makes it a challenge to make the project work because the costs don't go down at all to build it.
Okay, I I get that. Then then I guess, Noah, this goes to you because waiver number nine. States that they cost more. That it costs, there's a higher cost for the low and very low units. And what I just heard said is they cost exactly the same, but their value is lower because of the reduced rents.
Uh, I apologize for the poor use of of writing. Uh, it's high cost relative to the the return on those. On the rents that 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 unit will receive compared to the market rate.
But they don't cost anymore, which is what that says. It says they cost more, and that I was struggling with, why would they cost more? They wouldn't cost more. Their value is less.
Well, they cost, e- exactly, and I apologize, it's poorly written. This is relatively high cost of constructing combined with reduced rents. That, yeah, but that is correct, because I could have written it much more clearly.
Okay. Um. Waiver ten talks about um. That can is requested the collection of fees uh, to be deferred. What guarantee do we have that they will be paid?
So uh, if the council were to choose to support that as a part of the affordability agreement, which is a uh. Essentially a contract document that's signed and recorded. Uh, the fee collection will be built into that, and um, the hook that the city has separate from that legal contract is allowing people to move into the building. Because we control that with our, it's called occupancy, but it's essentially finding, filing the building permit.
So they, they won't get that. So they, they won't get that occupancy. Unless and until that money's paid.
Exactly.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear, because what I was afraid of, we give them the occupancy. Um, permit and then they walk away and say, oh, well, we're bankrupt. We can't pay you those fees. So I, I wanted to make sure that we were going to get them at some point. And I'm glad to hear that, then they don't get the. The occupancy. We'll talk about the density stuff later. We talked about the decks. Um, in the financial consideration section, this is probably a Noah thing. At the very bottom, it says any other financial considerations. That arise from the negotiation of the affordable housing agreement will be presented to the city council. Uh, for consideration when that agreement is brought before the city council for consideration and approval. That seems very vague and very open-ended that we. Are committing to some possibly unidentified amounts by approving this.
So, uh, it was intentionally vague and open-ended because I wasn't sure what the council was going to ask for as a part of this discussion. There's nothing in the report or in the current conditions that is vague or open-ended.
Okay. So. It depends upon what else we ask for.
Exactly.
Okay, all right.
Or, or direction you provide to us.
Okay, okay, that, that helps. Um. In the environmental section, it says, uh, which assumed one hundred ninety-eight total residential units would be built. Is that the total for the, the, um. The, uh, specific plan is one hundred ninety-eight units?
That's correct.
And with this development, how many units will be there?
One hundred ninety-eight units, a portion of them are live work, but. So whether that's pure commercial or how we want to count it, but one hundred ninety-eight residential units will be built if this project's approved and constructed.
So no more units are possible. For all the remaining lots that are there.
So. Uh, so because, so I don't know. Katadia has done this interesting thing, which is, is, I've never seen done before where. It uses the environmental document for both of the specific plans, the downtown specific plan and Centerra. To dictate residential density. That's not a common way that uh, cities would, would identify density levels. It's how it's been done here, you know, over the last twenty years or so. But the unique thing is if someone just say this project's built and then next, someone else came in and said, hey, I want to do residential. What we would have to do is, yeah, the current EIR assumes. One hundred ninety-eight residential units and two hundred forty-five thousand square feet of commercial space. The likelihood of ever getting an office built at the end of a dead-end cul-de-sac residential neighborhood is not very likely or desirable. So what we would do is we would go through the exercise to rewrite and reanalyze the impacts of that. Two hundred and fifty thousand square feet of commercial space through the lens of residential development.
So meaning we'll have to rewrite the plan?
Yes, and you may recall that the city's been granted fifty thousand dollars from uh, ABAG MTC to do that. And then my department also has a budget request into you. To further fund rewriting that plan to make it more workable and put more housing next to the train station rather than office that is not likely to ever occur.
Okay. Um, so back in the, God, I didn't even know what section I'm in. Oh, in the city council resolution. Um, it says, uh, item four says this approval shall be valid for a two-year period from the date of the approval. So is this a requirement?
Yeah, that's per the code, so it's any entitlement is a two-year, as a two-year life. And they can, they can request one-year extensions, two-one-year extensions.
Two-one-year extensions?
Yeah.
And the reason I'm asking is because we have had. Many of these things go on for decades. So I am concerned that, you know, that, that uh. Mr. Elliott talked about, yeah, well, we want to do this and we want to do that, but. What has happened is it doesn't happen. And it doesn't happen for decades, so I, I want to be sure that. You know, if this goes somewhere, that it actually happens and doesn't get sat on um, forever. And you talked about. Why you have approximately. In the below market rate is because you're still working on that?
Well, it was anticipating the council would like to have some uh, input into that conversation.
Okay, all right, so does that mean that after we have input that the approximately will be taken out and. And the final number will be in there or will it always stay as a proxpet?
So it could go two ways, the council could um, agree, I think, to these numbers and say the resolution should be absolute. Or you could provide direction and staff would come back with the affordability agreement that actually. Provides the nuts and bolts on the affordability levels and the terms and all those things, and that's a recorded document that needs council approval anyway.
Okay, all right, so uh, Mayor, if you don't mind, I, I would like. To have a further after-public discussion and everyone else talks, a discussion about the density. But those are my questions for right now, thank you.
Thank you. Let me scroll over a bit, a few of my council members seem to be hiding right now. See, I see a hand from Councilmember Sparks, Councilmember Sparks, go ahead if you have questions.
Thank you, I just have one quick question, uh, clarification on the number of units, um, on page twenty-nine of the packet. Sorry, number of affordable units. On page twenty-nine, the item nine. Says that city housing fund to pay the proposed impact fees for eleven. Low and very low units, but then on the table. On page forty-two, there are only ten listed. So I just wanted to get some clarification on that.
Yeah, it's ten total for very low and low.
Okay, so the eleven was just a, should, should just say ten.
That's correct.
Okay, that was my only question, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sparks, and I thank you particularly for that because that's kind of going to lead right into my first question. Forgive me, I may be unclear, but. I had my initial notes that we had eight very low, two low and ten moderate. Is that correct or is it nine moderate? Are we sitting at uh? Twenty or nineteen affordable units?
Twenty currently.
Twenty, okay, so it is ten. That's three scratch outs, but your mayor finally got it right. Thank you, Mr. House. All right, so next question, a little more. Deep than that, so. We've certainly known and seen each other for a while, uh, we've been discussing this, us, the council, members of the community, this development team for a long time. But, you know, in general, I think the parking thing is better than, I think that's really great, um. My first take is I'd certainly be open to deferring fees, um, we've done a lot of that and I'm certainly open to that discussion, makes sense, um. I have concerns about fairly significant fifty percent cut to balconies and porches. I like those types of things for residents, particularly more dense workforce housing. But I do recognize we have some nice green spaces that are accessible too, so that's, that's a good thing. I guess the last thing that it comes down to is the numbers. Relating the number of affordable units that we realize from this. And I guess to help me do that, I have to ask a question first before we have discussion later. And the question is this, um. Can somebody, Mr. House or Mr. Rudolph, perhaps both you might want to speak. Describe to me a little clear focus, what the positive economic impact of that very large shift. From two and three bedrooms to one bedrooms. I, I think, didn't you go from something like. Eight one bedrooms to now fifty-eight single-bedroom units? And I ask that because, you know, I recognize I haven't had to look for a rental place in some years now. But I know that it say, just for argument, if I could get a one bedroom for two K nowadays. I'm not going to get a two-bedroom for four games, it's going to cost less than that, and, and it's the same with the three bedroom. So, so clearly there's a huge benefit to this and I recognize that helps make the pencil, the project pencil out, a term we hear with great regularity. But at the same time, I also recognize this is, I suspect, a really significant benefit. And so for that, I want to make sure that, you know, the people of Katadia are getting. An appropriate benefit in return later when we discuss the number of customers, so just describe to me a little bit what that looks like. Mr. House, you have any thoughts on that to start?
Uh, well, yeah, I mean, so since I was hired in Katadia two thousand nineteen, I thought this project would be a huge benefit to the community, putting. Uh, a mixed-use project right next to the train station. Building the city park, extra parking for the station, so that could, the capacity there can be increased. More walkable, I mean, it, it just walks the talk of everything that a planner wants, right? I mean, just, putting on just pure planner hat. Uh, so the benefits are there. But what I've seen also, and, and I, you know, Vice Mayor Harvey alluded to this, you all alluded, alluded to this regularly. Is how many projects have. Um, gotten entitled to Katadia and never been built for a variety of reasons, but I do see. The, the ability for cities to, for lack of a better term, you know, maximize exactions from development. Um, is, that, that window is closing on, on how development works. Both because all the different levers that the state has provided to folks to build different things. The impacts we've had from the construction industry as, as contractors and the tradespeople age and retire out and. Younger people don't get involved in that and then all the crazy supply chain things on materials. All those things have combined to, from my perspective. Justify giving the increased return on the project's bottom-line pro forma. Um, from that shift in three bedrooms to one bedrooms in exchange for the city getting a huge amount of public benefit. That I don't actually see very many projects being able to foot the bill for looking into the future.
And thank you, Mr. And I would agree with much of that, uh, but what I was really asking more is just to help us get a better sense of what. That increase in financial. Improvement was, that's, that's kind of all I was looking for and there's nothing prejorative about that. I like the thought that you could actually make some money off something, that's not a bad thing. So maybe I'll jump to you, Mr. Rudolph, you look like you're ready, ready to go and maybe can give me some clarity.
Turn off, Mayor. Uh, I, I believe the, the simple answer is as follows. Um, when we first penciled this out at seventy-four units, we were thinking the three bedrooms would rent. Somewhere around twenty-seven hundred dollars and a one-bedroom would rent for about. Eighteen hundred dollars, or to make it simple, two thousand and three thousand. So by eliminating three bedrooms and turning them into two one-bedrooms, you start to pick up. About a thousand dollars, right? You've got two at two thousand versus killing one at three thousand. You lose three, you pick up four. Um, you would do end up, as Doug pointed out, with twenty-five less bedrooms, less impact. From that perspective, and you are picking up about a thousand dollars a month in rent across. Uh, the, the three bedrooms you're eliminating. Okay, that helps where? Well, we're spending about a million and a half dollars in widening Centerra Way. Building the, the, building out the city parking lot, buying and building the park. And uh, completing pipe-in-the-ground work that uh, uh, the city engineer wants done. We could not pencil the seventy-four units with that mix. And believe me, uh, I approached multiple banks and the issue was always the same. Uh, we're not too, banks are not too comfortable, um, underwriting. Uh, anything that doesn't generate revenue. So they don't like affordable units, they don't like units that are deed restricted with respect to rents tied. To a different level of inflation, i.e. Wages versus the inflation on prices. And they definitely don't like underwriting, um, uh, non-market. Projects, that's why Doug showed that chart with the tax credits to sort of drive it, because banks just won't do that kind of thing. So when we looked at the seventy-four unit approval we got in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and we went to the banks. We could not finance it. When we pivoted to a, um. Nonprofit affordable housing project development. They could not get the tax credits and the biggest reason they couldn't get the tax credits was. The number one rubric was cost per unit. And guess what? For that cost, with that impact of all of the exactions just described. Um, seventy-four units didn't do it. When Bridge Housing left the field of play. They had a meeting with myself and my partners and described that at a hundred units, they might have been able to do it. And that then got us thinking perhaps we should attack it. From a completely different angle, and that's when we brought Doug into the partnership. And as you can see, he's thought it through, we have modeled this non-stop now for two years. And I can honestly say this is the best we can do.
Well, I think there's a lesson there certainly for. That we've all learned and I think there's a lesson there certainly for Bridge Housing too, because I wish we had followed that approach that, uh. That project would have bought significant benefit in terms of. Low-cost housing and, and I agree with your concern. I realize that banks don't appreciate this quite logically. Uh, fortunately, the state does very much and they're leaning on us very heavily for us to appreciate it as well, so I know you understand our position. So with that, I think this is a perfect time to take a break then, since we've all had some questions and open the public hearing on this.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. John Savage, please go ahead. John, if you can go ahead and unmute.
Mr. Savage, we're still seeing you as muted. If you can unmute, please go ahead.
All right, can you hear me now?
Perfect.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council, I'm John Savage. And I am speaking as an individual citizen and homeowner on Centerra Way since two thousand and five. I'm speaking on my own behalf as this matter is related solely to my personal interests. I attended the neighborhood meeting held about the Centerra Way apartments. And I believe that the project as a whole will be a strong and positive addition to Centerra Way. I believe the issues identified about the development have been thoughtfully considered and addressed to the best of the planner's ability. Specifically, the reduction in the number of bedrooms. Widening of Centerra Way for ninety-degree parking and elimination of no overnight parking. Additional parking on Depot Way. Emergency vehicle access, a new park. And lastly, developing a Centerra Way parking management plan with current homeowners. It would be good to see another portion of the Centerra Way specific plan be fulfilled. Thank you.
Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Thank you. All right, well, that will conclude, we'll close the public hearing. And bring it back then to the council for discussion and see where we go with this. So I'll see who'd like to speak first, and I see the Vice Mayor has her hand up and ready, followed by Councilmember Sparks. We'll go in that order to start.
Well, I, I really would like to um, talk about the density bonus stuff. I, um. Really had a lot of difficulty with. Looking at the charts and looking at all the calc- calculations and really felt that they were misleading. Because everything mentions, um, the original, um. Forty-eight units for the, for the zoning. And it, and it feels like it's just like glossed over, completely and absolutely glossed over. That an additional twenty-six units was added. And everything keeps referring back and the percentages keep being calculated. Off of forty-eight units. And that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about ninety-eight units. And I think it was just even said, which is interesting information, that Bridge Housing had said that if. For a hundred units, they could make this happen, yet what we're being asked here is to have seventy-eight market rate units. And so I struggle with the density, um, bonus as it is. We're being asked for twenty-four. We're being asked for twenty-four units plus twenty-six units. For a total of fifty units extra. Yet we're not being given but twenty units affordable. The eight units are given because in order to get the first density bonus. Those eight had to be given because the calculation came out. To seven point two units and you can't do point two of a unit. So it's always going to get rounded up to a whole unit. So then there's the other units for a total of twenty. And, and I just, I don't. Feel like this is enough. And I personally would like to, um, request. That staff work to increase that number of units. Um, because I, I just adding twenty-six more units on top of that. There seems to be plenty of play here to do that. And, and I'm, I'm just not seeing. I, I'm not seeing it. The parking, the parking's been a problem. They've known the parking's a problem. That parking problem was created. Um, and they have heard a lot of input, as have we for over a decade about that. So. So that, um, rightfully. Should be included. The park, I think, is important and the parking is really kind of needed. As was pointed out, so that the residents that are sitting in all those other units. That have three and some of them four bedrooms, they have a place to park. Because if you go down there. In the evening, that lot that, that is being talked about, um. To be built on, there's a ton of cars parking there. Because there's no place for them to park. So that, that, that's been, that's been, been a known, um, a, a known issue. So my request is, um. To look at adding more units, my preference would be twenty-four units. Um. Deed restricted affordable. And so I'm willing to listen to what others have to say, but that would be my request.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor Harvey. And we'll go next to Councilmember Sparks and then to Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. I want to thank, uh, thank you for the presentation. It was really informative and thank you to Mr. House for. Um, putting together the great staff report about everything. Um, I, I am enthusiastic about this project. I, I think that the statement. Was made earlier that you ought to be, hopefully there's some enthusiasm and I, I'm just really, really happy to see the, um. Very low, um, very low income affordable units. Uh, arena allocation, I think, is about. Noah, can you correct me if I'm wrong? About thirty for, for the extremely low?
That's correct. Very low is thirty, yeah.
Yeah. So to see a single project come in with almost thirty percent of our, of our arena for extremely low, I think that's a, a great benefit. Um. I'm really pleased to see the way the park and the commercial space is going to work together to make that area a little bit more vibrant. And, um, I, I. I would honestly be open to being flexible about the exact number of units to make sure that this gets built. I mean, we've seen this not, this parcel sit vacant, and I would love to see something. Get built. And if, if nineteen units gets it built and twenty doesn't, I would be willing to go down to nineteen. Um, so I'm, I'm very, very enthusiastic about this and I really liked what, uh, what I saw tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. Um, yeah, thanks for the staff report and presentations as well. Very helpful. Um. I, I was on planning commission when, when the previous project went through and, um. And I'm always fighting for more affordable units. Um, one. So I'm primarily comparing this application to the already approved seventy-two unit application and. I think we measured density wrong. So, so that's one issue I have with just looking at ninety-eight versus seventy-two, like. Like the fact that we're losing twenty-five bedrooms in this proposal compared to the previous. Actually indicates to me that this is a lower density proposal than the one we, we already approved. And. So I think the only counting units is problematic. We ought to think about that in the long run, like. How do we really talk about density as family types change as they are doing? Um, we need to think about that. Um, so I'm, I'm comfortable since this fits in the same building envelope, probably is a slightly, uh. Smaller number of people. Um, parking is, is good. I don't, I don't have an issue, uh, with this adjustment. Um, and I think some of the reasons for, for turning the three bedrooms, you know. A three-bedroom into two one-bedrooms, um, to make it easier to, to manage and to fit. Current, uh, family, you know, the direction families, uh, households are heading makes a lot of sense. Um, I would rather see the eight-three-nine division that's in the staff report than the eight-two-ten. Um, number that's been mentioned here. So I would like to see a little conversation about how those are. How those twenty units are apportioned. And it's important to me that, that all of them represent a mix. Of housing types and not be of unit types and not all be the, the smallest units. Um, be the, the deed restricted ones. We have to accommodate not just single people in the affordable units, but some families. At least as well. Um. I think, uh, yeah, I, I. Like some earlier comments, I have some issues with the removal of the balconies and the, the fact that only a quarter of the units will have any private outdoor space. That. Um, so that, that shared outdoor space better pretty nice to make up for it. It's, I guess, the only, um. Uh, the only consolation for that loss, but, uh, but I would still support it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. All right, Councilmember Harvey, I see your hands back. And did you have something else you wanted to add?
I just wanted a clarification because Councilmember Sparks stated that we were getting eight. Um. Extremely low units, and that is not the proposal. The proposal is for eight very low. Zero extremely low.
So I'm, I'm sorry. I, I did misread the report. That is a major point. Sorry about that.
So we still have thirty very low in our arena and thirty in our extremely low. And this does nothing for the extremely low. I, I just wanted to get that clarification from Noah.
It is very low and I. Up until this year, extremely low wasn't even mentioned in Rena. So I, I'm, I, I have a frustration with how the state is, is. Changing their tune depending on who passes what legislation, but. Uh, they're very, the Rena historically has been very low, low and moderate income, and this project is proposing eight very low units.
Right. But I just didn't want it to go by the wayside because there's, there's actually sixty, however you want to. However, you want to call them, if you want to call them low, you know, whatever you want to call them, but there's actually sixty of them, not thirty. So it, it doesn't put a huge dent in that one or two category, correct?
Can I make a comment on that subject?
Um, please.
In my capacity at EAH, we have addressed this issue as well. There's a lot of state subsidies that we seek. Uh, are requiring, um, extremely low income, which is roughly, I think, twenty to thirty-five or forty percent of median. Those projects are, um, for the homeless. That, uh, that, the entire legislation is about homeless housing. Um, and so when we do a extremely low income project, it's based on, on finance with all the services and all the other things that go. For a homeless project. And they're in, we have, you know, in the eighty-four hundred units, we've done, we've never. Ha, integrated extremely low with very low, yeah, very low, low and moderate income is how typical tax credit affordable housing is financed. Very low is done by homeless providers and would not properly integrate into this project.
Agreed, but, but that's the, the numbers that we were given don't specify that it's homeless. Only, correct? Noah?
Uh, it doesn't. Uh, it is interesting. I was just having a conversation with Jane prior to our meeting earlier. This, the state actually allows you to aggregate your very low and your extremely low. And I think even your low. To where if you overbuild some, it can take credit for your extremely low. I'm not super clear on the details. But, um, they do allow you to aggregate the look at that. And there's a slide in the, the housing element presentation. That, uh, I had to get clarification on, but if you look at that, the bottom, it's a matrix and the bottom of it aggregates all three of those together. It's worth taking a look because it's an interesting nuance. But to Doug's point. We are not likely to ever get extremely low as a part of our inclusionary housing program.
Absolutely. But I, I just, since Councilmember Sparks had said that that's what we were getting, I just wanted to make sure that she knew that that was.
I, I apologize for misspeaking.
It's okay. I just wanted to make sure you knew.
Yeah.
All right. Well, let's see. I guess I'll kick off by saying. I feel a sense of frustration and that's in behalf of all of the parties involved tonight. I think all of us, for a variety of reasons, but many of them shared, would like to see this project cross the finish line tonight. Um. I think that's a given. Um, I think all the points, the positive points that have been made about it. There are none that I greatly argue with, um, at all. Uh, but the only hiccup that we're facing is this new and continued pressure from the state, uh, this new world we're living in it. Unfortunately, was perhaps not so much of a problem the last time we were looking at things, but now it's the world we have to live in, unfortunately, and, uh. We don't have control over that. Uh. I mean, I would personally frankly be leaning towards loving to see this as I indicate past tonight. I lean towards support. But I would agree, I would like to see an expansion, even a small one. Even something that was merely just a good faith effort. In expanding those numbers or that proportion in a way that was viewed as beneficial. I think that would be very well received by me. I suspect it would be well received by the rest of my council members. So I think since we've all had a chance to talk in staff and our. Our, uh, development team is sitting here. I'll give them a chance if they'd like to speak and respond to that and let them put on their thinking gaps a little bit. And see what we can do here. So I'm open to comments from either staff or the development team. Please, uh, raise your hand or let me know if you'd like to speak.
Mayor, it's Neil Rudolph. Um, thank you so much. Thank you. Uh, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to think this through with the city council members. Uh, I first. Want to make clear that, um, this particular total of twenty. Affordable is a greater percentage of the project than what was approved previously. Uh, so the twenty affordability on ninety-eight obviously is more than twenty percent. There were fourteen affordability on seventy-four. Uh, and so this is a, a greater percentage right out of the box, but I'm hearing from the council members loud and clear. I'm trying to come up with a compromise that would work for everyone. Um, and I believe that the development team could accept eight very low and. Um, Councilmember Harvey is a hundred percent correct. That, that is a given to get the density bonus. Uh, cause it's, as she pointed out appropriately, it's, uh, eight over forty-eight, that gets you the fifteen percent. And you qualify for the density bonus. Uh, we could go to three low income units. It's problematic to mix those three other than one bedrooms to try to speak to Councilmember Ford's point. The eight are a mix of one and two bedrooms. Uh, the three low, if we. Come to that conclusion, would best be all one bedrooms. What we would like sort of from the city would be the opportunity to take the total back to nineteen. And release one moderate from deed restriction. So we would go eight, three. And nine, I believe I've done that.
That would be correct, yeah.
Is, did I do that right? Eight, three and nine? No, eight, it'd be eight, three and eight.
Eight, three and eight, yeah. I thought, I, excuse me, but I thought we were just.
Eight very low, three. Yes, eight very low, three low and, and eight moderate. And I know that.
Let me apologize for just a second. I, I don't, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but. This is a recurring theme that we have to crack for sure. Mr. House, can you confirm me? Cause I thought we asked a bit ago, we were told that that moderate number was ten. It was eight, two and ten. Uh, is it eight, two and ten, which we're talking?
That's where we stand right now is eight, two and ten.
Okay, so, so then we'd be to get down to eight moderate, we'd be taking down two units. Is that correct?
Right. Yeah, but you'd be adding one unit to the low.
I think we were just looking for the addition to the low, but, um. But I see what you're saying. Right. Okay. Well, I'm gonna let my, so I'll ask first staff. Hate to put you on the spot since this is unexpected. Can any, give me, give me a cost versus benefit, uh, quick take in this. My first thought is there is that. Moderate is essentially market rate. I mean, it's a good value for working people, but obviously in terms of people who really need the help and for our needs for Rena. Uh, low. Even if it isn't the primo of the other ones, it's still a benefit. In your sense, are we better with this? With losing the moderate going to, what was the eight, three and eight? Versus sticking at eight, two and ten.
I, I absolutely, uh, Mayor, I absolutely agree. Getting low income unit when you can is absolutely worth it. As you said, market rate or moderate is essentially market rate. And, and Mr. Elliott has very good economic. He can throw out hard numbers on the cost of this over the life of the project. But if you just in today's dollars, moderate rate is essentially renting at market. So you really, the project only loses value as inflation happens and the cost of those rents increase, but the moderate ones are held down. By that deed restriction. So, um, it's, it's kind of a wash in today's money, but it affects the long-term value of the project. Whereas low and very low income units affect the financing available today. So it's a benefit to get it. And, and I will say, part of the reason I wrote it flexibly is there's a formula in the Affordable Housing Code. Which says that the council can, can, uh, swap. Moderate rate units for low and very low income units, but the ratio that's in that doesn't recognize that impact on the market value. So it says. You know, one very low is worth three moderates, but the economics don't support that. It's more probably like seven moderates. On the overall cost of a project. So I think getting that one very low, or I'm sorry, that one low in exchange is a good deal for the city.
All right. Well, before I've spoken plenty here, I will just say, I think we're moving in a better direction. This is good. Um. I think we all do share the interest of wanting to get somewhere. I'll just close my comments from the moment saying. I'm still not, I, I like where we're going. I'm not certain about how we get to eight. I picture. Unfortunately, I have a math professor on my council, so perhaps he can speak and help me with this. But I'm looking at seeing if I see a column that says eight very low. Too low and ten moderate. And I say, I'm going to slide one from moderate. To low, that leaves me with eight, three and nine, not eight, three and eight. But we can discuss that some more. So I'll see. Who else would like to comment where the council would like to go? And it looks like the person I just kind of leaned on for help has his hand up. Mr. Ford?
Yeah, thanks. Um, thanks, Mayor. So Noah was just alluding to this, that our code currently has basically an exchange rate for, for. The council can consider exchanging, and it's not a one-to-one exchange. So. I'm, so he told us that the moderate to very low ratio that's in our code is three to one, like. Like we can approve one extra very low and take three moderates off the, off the list. What's the moderate to low? Ratio in the code? Noah, do you know?
I, I've just pulled it up to read it right now.
Okay. So as he researches that, um, yeah, given that, given that, uh, rental units of, of this scale. Uh, moderate income is basically, um, market rate right now. That's what we were talking about earlier with the affordable by design. Hope for these, um. I would be okay with that switch to eight, three, eight. I mean, the staff report already says eight, three, nine, and I was hoping that's where we were starting. Not ending up lower than that. Um. So, but I don't feel that the, uh. The trying to get one more moderate income, re, deed restricted unit is, um. A huge deal for me. So I, I would rather see three low unit, three low deed restricted units than two. That's, that's much more important to me.
All right. Thank you. And let me check my list again and see what hands I have up. Um. I'm not seeing any Councilmember Harvey or Vice, excuse me, Vice Mayor Harvey, any thoughts in this? Cause you had brought up some concerns with this balance too. And you had a much higher number to start. So where are you at on this?
I, I feel this is going in completely the wrong direction. So we now went from twenty down to nineteen. And, uh. I'm just having difficulty with this in general, because I don't feel that we're going in the right direction. So that's where I'm at.
Would, are you at all?
From twenty to nineteen. We just went down rather than up.
Huh? If that number stayed twenty. If that number stayed twenty, if we did go to an eight, three and nine, even though there is incredible argument that there's a different ratio for the value of the two, so that might be appropriate. But if we were able to do that, eight, three and nine, so.
But that's already what's in the staff report.
Yeah, but would you be comfortable with that? Because what we would have then is we would have three instead of, excuse me.
The staff report says eight, three, nine.
Actually, it says eight, two and.
Well, on page twenty four, it says, I mean, maybe that's part of the problem is it's different numbers on different pages. But on page twenty four, it says eight, three and nine for a total of twenty units in the staff report.
Noah, could you can guide us in this one more time and?
Yeah, there was just a lot of back and forth with the developer ad through this. It is eight, two and ten is the number that was finally agreed to by with staff and the applicant.
So the staff report is incorrect.
It's inconsistent. There's the same. Both information is provided.
All right, well, I wish it was like the menu where we could choose either one, but having said that, okay, so we do know then that's where we're starting from. So eight, two and ten. So increasing one in our low would be advantageous. The question remains. Are we as a majority except willing to go to eight, dropping a full two of the moderates? That seems to be the last area perhaps. And I'm gonna look and see if I have any other hands, because forgive me, Councilmember Sparks, you're not in my visual field right now. So I see Laura, you do have your hand up. Then Neil, I'm gonna go to you next, because I saw you waving your hand.
Well, thank you. I I just wanted to ask a question to Neil and Doug, which is just can you put into real dollar terms for us what it what it costs you to convert an additional unit to a low income unit and and how much, how much leeway do you feel you have to do that and still be able to get financing for the project?
It, that's a great question. It costs us in terms of borrowing capacity. And prior to all the fun and games and the capital markets in the last three or four weeks, it would be costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars of borrowing capacity for every very low and hundreds thousand dollars for every low, which means if we can't borrow it, we have to fund it ourselves. Well, we have to fund all the improvements outside of the rental generating portion of the building ourselves. And so you're starting to get into a debt equity ratio where the equity is now hundreds of thousands of dollars more, and hence the return on equity starts to drop into low single digits, and that's why things don't get built. It's just that simple. It's just structured finance. And I sort of do that for a living. With respect to the percentage, and I think this is incredibly important. The reason we're suggesting nineteen in total is that percentage of the total ninety eight units is obviously night, a little over nineteen percent. The approved plan today, which we could not finance, was at eighteen point nine percent, fourteen affordable units over seventy four. So Vice Mayor's Harvey's point of we're going the wrong direction, we're actually still in exactly the same position we were five years ago. Five years of not being able to get it built.
But yeah, I I'd like to make one other. All right, so let's see. Next, I have a hang on just a second there with me. I had some notes. Neil, Doug, I have you next. Mister Elliott, please go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to amplify what Neil spoke about. I really understand from a policy standpoint, having been in affordable housing for thirty years, how important it is to try to incorporate affordable housing at the lowest income levels in every project. That is good public policy, and it's something we try to do. We don't pay any fees, we build them. The problem is the capital, that when you look at a moderate income unit, you say, well, that's roughly the same as a market rate unit, so it's relatively revenue neutral. It's actually not. Because the way these projects get built or don't get built is their ability to assemble the capital to build them. And when you have a permanently affordable deed restricted unit, even if its current rent as a moderate income is equal to what the market rent is, the banks and the capital markets say, well, that's not forever and inflation will continue. That unit will ultimately be not as valuable. What's it cost more to manage that unit because of all the income qualifications and other issues that go on with deed restricted housing? So a moderate income unit is still an exaction on a project. And and the 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 tension that happens, which is a good tension, is that the cities want more public benefit and they want more affordable housing as part of the condition, and that's why they have an inclusionary housing ordinance. But as they increase, the ability to put the capital together to actually see the project get realized gets lower and lower and lower. And that's why the frustration occurs with the cities where you've got all these projects approved and they never get built. Because you reach too far and the things can't get capitalized. And that's what we're talking about now. We're pushing this project to the edge of being feasible in in a in very, in very challenging capital market time right now. So it's significant to us to to, I mean, we we stretched, we weren't trying to play a poker game here. We really stretched hard and staff pushed us pretty hard too. Along the way to try to deliver a proper public benefit, plus the million and a half dollars of infrastructure exactions that are here. If the city said, look, we'll pay to build the park. We'll pay to upgrade the sewer for which Mister Brown, I say, there's no nexus to build. Then we could probably balance the books more, but those are things that were approved. We didn't ask for concessions on those. We didn't ask to eliminate them. So it's really important in a public policy discussion to recognize the art of what's possible and what's achievable versus a theoretical. And I think that's what we're struggling to do right now. And that's, and that's what we've worked really closely with staff to try to achieve and and the city manager. And I think we're really very close. I think we're there. If we can, if we can do this. You know, basically, I think we get to get to the eight, three and eight is a project that doesn't crater the the equity, the ability to get equity and delivers, you know, a big impact to the to the housing stock that's hard to deliver without more subsidy.
Well, thank you, Mister Elliott. I do hear all the things you're saying. I would disagree mildly. I don't know if we're exactly at the same position, but with more on this, because as I alluded to earlier, I do recognize the vast changes in moving to one bedrooms is greatly increased the capital available for this. And so the rest of it stays essentially at the previous agreements for the previous project. It wasn't bringing in half as much capital. So I don't think it's unreasonable to look at what we can do to get the state off our back a little bit here. That's and bring benefit honestly to our community. So that's a fair discussion for us to have. And I'll just share something that may help. You know, I hear people that I've known for years say that this just, this as far as we can go and it doesn't pencil out. And you know, as a human being, I want to respect that and accept it. At the same time, as a council member, I have to admit, this is what I've heard for thirteen years now from every developer. And the problem is many times I'm sure it was true, but many times it wasn't. I have no idea and I have no idea what the range is, if it's small, if it's large or what. I do remember oh, maybe half a decade ago, sitting in the, when we used to be able to gather in chambers together, discussing Valparaiso. Another project Mister Colvin's actually. And having the same back and forth about a requested increase in photovoltaic, excuse me, photovoltaic panels. One of my colleagues asked it somewhat the last minute to increase that number, and we had a lot of back and forth. And I remember being somewhat moved and might have been Neil himself actually was speaking, he said, we just can't do that. That's not normal. Most places wouldn't do this many. And forgive me, I don't remember the number, but I ultimately agreed. And unfortunately, literally within a couple of months, I noticed other projects coming in everywhere with much higher numbers of panels on roofs, which made me think, ah, I bet there was room there, I should have pushed for it. But so this is just not to call anyone out heaven forbid, it's just to give you an idea. I think I have a sense of where you're coming from, your concerns, that's what we wrestle with. So before I bring it back to the council, I guess for a final pass at this, because our choices are simple. I see three in front of us. We can pass this as is. We can accept the offer of an eight, three and eight. Or we could reject it and direct them to work more, but essentially that could lead to rejection, which is a concern too. I'm gonna ask the developing team one last time. Is there any other good faith efforts you can think of to suggest to add to this that would be beneficial for the council? So perhaps we could have some comfort to get to a a passing vote here tonight. And I'll just leave that open for a second. If any of you would like to speak or have any thoughts, I'd welcome that. I'll come back to the council actually, then I guess for comments from them. But if you if you do have something you'd like to interject, please raise your hand. And if I don't see it, just go ahead to speak up and I will recognize you, all right? So with that, I'll bring it back to the council and see if we'd like to see where we'd like to go. So those are the choices I see. If somebody sees something else, I certainly welcome it. Anybody?
This is Ben. I I see Neil was waving his hand, so I don't know if you want to recognize him.
I'd be happy to, Neil.
Yeah, no, I I just wanted to point out one thing, Mayor Landman, you you do remember the Kessin situation correctly. And the change there was a change in technology. What we were looking at for the cost of photovoltaic when we approached the city, remember, we went through this two times, both at planning commission and at city council. So the total process took over a year. And by the time it actually got built, and actually about a year or so later, the technology had changed where the the costs had come down as Chinese panels were pouring into the country. So I I just wanted to try to clarify that. I I wasn't trying.
Sure, that was part of it, but I will point out that it was after we did an approval. It wasn't when it was being constructed. It was literally within a few months. I started by seeing more of these, and perhaps that was really indicated as, like I said, I don't know. This is just what we're dealing with.
I think I think in this case, we would, we think we have a very fine proposal. We we were comfortable at eight, two and ten. Your, the comments from city council suggested we had to show compromise. I believe we have shown compromise at eight, three and eight. You're getting another low income unit, which I know staff is very interested in getting. Because this has gone back and forth between Doug's team, Doug, myself, Larry and 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 Noah and his team. This is as good as we can push it.
All right. Well, thank you, Mister Ford. I see a hand up. Please take the floor.
I I just wanted to clarify, this is on the agenda as a public hearing, so we're not actually making a decision tonight, is that correct?
Oh, the decision is, there's a recommendation before the council from staff.
Resolution.
Okay, okay, I'm not clear on public hearings versus regular addition, regular agenda items, then. You can, you can clear that up for me later. So in that case, I I would like to see this proposal go forward. It's clear that to me that it's there's no advantage to a developer for holding a project and not developing for five years. So it's it's pretty clear to me that the pretty, the previous project didn't pencil and while I would love to see more affordable units, I think nineteen percent of the total is a pretty good number. That will help our Rena number. So I'm I'm in support of the eight, three, eight number.
All right. I'll see if any of my other colleagues have anything more to add on this. Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. I am also in support of the the eight, three, eight compromise. I would have also been supportive of the original numbers. And I would like to point out that well, we all know this already, but this passed the planning commission on a four zero vote. So our planning commissioners saw a lot of value in this project as well. So I want to honor their their work and I support this.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Sparks. Vice Mayor Harvey.
Um, I see this going in the wrong direction and and I'm sorry, but I can't support this. And I'm truly not convinced that this will be a out of the box and be built. I think it will sit there again and will will be asked for extensions and will be told that, oh, well, we can't get materials or we can't get a builder or we can't get. So I'm just, I'm just not convinced. And I think our situation with our affordable units is only going to get worse.
All right, thank you for that. Well, I guess this is the time of the evening when everybody starts showing their cards. I've had my cards probably next to me for about a decade on this project. It's a relief to put them down, I guess. My endgame, I agree with the vice mayor very strongly. I would like to see more units. I'm not a hundred percent satisfied with where we're at. That is not a usual unusual experience, unfortunately, as a council member, and I'm used to that. My end goal tonight was I wanted to push and see more, something in terms of some sort of good faith improvement. And if I got that, I knew I didn't want to vote against this, because I think the benefits of parking that we fought for for years, the benefits of the park and other numerous things that we've talked about made that worthwhile. As well as the process, I'll give Mister Elliott credit, the way he's conducted himself and done business with doing this has been, I think of a positive has a positive impact, at least in my perception. It's just a difficult thing to know where this will go. I hope we're sitting here in a couple of years, this passes and done well. The negative part of me says perhaps it'll be just like council, Vice Mayor Harvey and I have seen many times for many years. But you caught me as developers in a good night, because many other nights, frankly, I was ready to say no to a lot of other projects, but you have a project tonight that I really didn't want to. And as much as I wavered back and forth, you gave just enough that I feel that I can satisfy this. So at any rate, I think we've all had a chance to share our thoughts. We've all beaten this down very thoroughly and worked it over well, which is a good thing to do. If everybody's equally unhappy, once again, we've succeeded. So with that, I'll look to my colleagues and see if somebody'd like to make a motion to adopt a revolution, resolution approving the as described, the requested design review and density bonus with the addition of the changes to the low income house, housing numbers.
I I would be happy to make that motion.
All right, that's the motion then from Councilmember Ford.
A second.
And we have a second from Councilmember Sparks. I'll ask if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
No.
Mayor Landman?
Yes. So that ultimately does carry on a three, one vote. I'd like to thank everybody involved for your years of work and involvement in this. And I thank everybody who provided input and different opinions on this tonight. This is how we get to as good a project at least as we can get to. Coming from both perspectives, both developers as well as the interests of the people living in the city. And that's how we do this. And I wonder if council, since we've been at this since four o'clock, it is now eight, twenty four. Would we like a fifteen minute break? Before we go on to our next item, I'm gonna look to my colleagues to see if I see a thumbs up or two. Councilmember Ford, you look particularly enthusiastic for that. I think that's enough to sell me. It is eight, twenty four. We will come back at twenty to nine, so we'll have a very brief recess. Thank you, everybody. Oh, wait a minute, we actually, we've got our vote. We're done. We can go to recess. We'll see you in a few. We'll see you in a few.
Apologies, for some reason Zoom decided it didn't like me anymore in our main computer. I tried restarting it and it still doesn't like me. Fortunately, my phone will accept this, so. I will ask for everybody's patience. It will be rather doubly hard to see all of your faces on this, so when we're looking for comments, I will encourage you just to speak up. Without apologies for the delay and have we commenced? Are we still on? Are we just beginning? Public hearing B.
Mayor, we're starting item B eleven B.
All right, so so we're just starting it now. Should I get it going? Are you in the middle of it?
No, we didn't. We were waiting, so go ahead.
Apologies and thank you for waiting. Well, welcome back, everybody, for after a slightly longer break than we intended. So this is item B tonight. This is another public hearing, and this is on the adoption of updated water and sewer rates, and I'll go right to the staff report.
Mayor, members of the council, this is Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. Tonight's item is to conduct a public hearing and then consider a resolution adopting a five-year water and sewer rate program. In mid-December of last year, the council approved an agreement withheld the brand consulting. To prepare the 10-year financial plan for both the water and sewer utilities and the five-year rate program. Both efforts are combined in the water and sewer study. Accepted by the city council on April 12th, when it set the date for this meeting and the public hearing for today. And and the study is to be part of the resolution as exhibit A. The timing for this requested action is appropriate as the prior five-year rate program expired this past July, July 2021. If adopted, the new rates would go into effect tomorrow. The proposed rate program, if adopted, provides for five annual adjustments in their water and sewer rates charged to our customers. The program was derived from actual and projected costs of operating and maintaining these systems and paying for needed capital improvements. Revenues are to be established to sufficiently offset these costs. The city is following the proposition 218 notification process with a notice and protest ballot. Having been mailed to all property owners with services on record at least 45 days prior to tonight's public hearing. The proposed rate structure is to be identical to the current structure, which encourages water conservation with an increased water. Increased tier structure, the unit price of water increases with increased water use, thus discouraging water waste. Following the presentation, the city is to conduct a public hearing and upon close of the hearing to tally the protests. That can be done by asking the deputy city clerk for the official tally and make a note that it's. Approximate as a thorough evaluation of it would need to be conducted if it were. Close to being 50% plus one needed to overturn a vote. And then. So once that threshold has been determined, the council would then proceed. To consider adopting the resolution establishing the five-year rate program. All right, so we have as a participant Mark Hildebrand, who's the who has prepared the study and we've been working with since December. Both myself, Angela Quarter, our Administrative Services Director, and Damian Obed, our city manager, have been working all very closely together since December on the study. And with Mark Hildebrand. So Mark, with that, I'll let you lead the presentation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Scott, and. Thank you for having me here this evening to give this presentation. If you could go to the next slide. This evening, I will be talking through the findings of the water and sewer rate studies. First, we'll cover the water financial plan and then the sewer financial plan. And we will wrap up with the steps that are required to complete the public hearing. Next slide. So as a introduction to this entire topic, it's important for the audience to understand that the city as a water and sewer. Provider is required to comply with the requirements of proposition 218. The two major components of proposition 218. Are essentially that A, it can't, the city can't charge more than the cost of providing service. So in other words, there are no, there's no part of the. Sewer or water rates that are going to pay for other city services like City Hall or something. And then the other component is the noticing requirement. All the property owners have received a notice in the mail. And we are holding this public hearing in compliance with proposition 218. Next slide. So go ahead and jump into the water rates. So we'll start out here, the. Snapshot of the expenses, the costs of running the water system are shown here in. Numbers on the left and in the pie chart on the right, and you can see that more than or almost a quarter of the costs. Are from purchasing water from Sonoma County Water Agency. For a total of about $2 million per year and just a little bit of debt there at the bottom. Next slide. The the rate increases are largely driven by capital spending, and you can see that. The city has done very little in the way of capital spending over the last three years. It's averaged about $4,000 per year. And over the next 10 years, there are plans to increase the capital spending. By quite a bit over that baseline. It is essential for utilities, wire utilities, sewer utilities to reinvest in their infrastructure. Their infrastructure is always aging, and it's very important to. Maintain a proactive capital program to make sure that. Aging infrastructure is addressed and rehabilitated before it actually fails. You can see that there was one project in particular, the site for storage tank that's quite large. And there is a, the proposal is to debt finance that project. Next slide. So this is the same group of projects that we just showed, and but this time it's color-coded to show the type of financing. So the green blocks are using proceeds or using cash from reserves. The red in the short term, there is a bit of a pinch, the increase in capital spending is. The the increase in the proposed rates isn't going to be soon enough to be able to afford the increase in capital spending that's happening in the short term. And so there is a proposal to borrow some money. From internally within the city to pay for those projects in fiscal 2425. And then on fiscal 28, the the tank project would be debt financed. Next slide. So this graph is a little bit more complicated, so I'll slow down a little bit, but this is intended to show a 10-year forecast of. Expenses expenses and revenues, assuming that the rate increases that are being proposed are adopted. So the the backgrounds, the in the top graph, you have a background in green which shows revenues. So there's the the light green in the middle represents the existing rate revenue that the city receives for its. Water rates and the dark green at the top represents the additional revenue that the city will receive. If the rate increases are adopted as proposed. The foregrounds and that top part of the graph, the columns represent the expenses. So the dark blue is the operating expense. The hash gray in the middle represents the debt service. And the light blue at the top represents the cash-funded capital spending. So the way to read this graph is that any time that. The columns are taller than the backgrounds than the green. That's a deficit year where you're drawing down in your reserves and anytime the background's higher than the columns, then that's a surplus where the reserves are being built up. And you can see that play out in the graph at the bottom, where you see the red line is the ending fund balance. So you can see we're starting at about $2 million. And that's being drawn down because of capital spending in the near term and then slowly built back up over the next five years. Again, part of the reason that you are able to rebuild those reserves is because you are taking the internal loan until you're not cash financing. The projects in 24 and 25. As well as that major project in in 28, which is also being debt financed. So. In the end, the last five years, you can see that the red line comes into equilibrium with your target reserve levels. Which is the intent of a 10-year financial plan. At the bottom, you can see the amount of the debt proceeds, so that internal. Debt or the internal loan would be nearly a million dollars and then the the tank project would be about $3.4 million. Next slide. So here's a summary of why the water rates are increasing. First, it should be noted that there was a to a rate study done in 2017 and the rates. Increases that are being proposed this evening are. Very similar to the rates that were anticipated to be needed at this time, based on the 10 financial 10-year financial plan at that time. So these rates increases are not a surprise, and they have been part of the city's long-term plan. Operating costs have increased by more than what was actually projected in 2017, namely water purchase costs for importing water from Sonoma Water. Have been going up significantly more than expected. A utility costs have also gone up more than expected. And then there's additional emergency operations and vehicle replacement costs, a lot of which was spurred by some of the recent fires. And then finally, there have been increases in general contracts and chemical costs with the recent inflation. Finally, the the last piece that's driving is that there. The water you funds did have was had a debt that was owed to. To sewer, to the sewer fund, and that's recommended that that be paid down in full in the short term. Largely because the sewer fund needs that money at this time. Next slide. So here is the proposed five-year water rate schedule. It shows the current rates. In the first column and then the proposed rates in the five columns after that. You can see there's a fixed monthly charge based on the size of your meter. Most the vast majority of single-family homes would be the three-quarter inch meter. And then you have tiered water rates for. Three different tiers, so up to 10,000 gallons per. Per month in tier one, and then another 10,000 gallons in tier two, and then anything over. 20,000 gallons in tier that's a tier three rate. All other customers that are residential. Sorry, are in single-family residential, a uniform rate, so they pay the same rate. It's important to note that the. Weighted average of all of the tiered rates paid by the single-family homes is equal to the. Uniform rate paid by all the other customers. So there is equity in the sense that. The the average rate paid by all single-family customers is equal to the uniform rate of those other customers. Next slide. So just to put these numbers into context, because that schedule isn't very helpful. This slide is showing how some folks, how their actual bill will look like in year one. So this is using different types of customers. So if we just take the first row. If you take a low-use, single-family home with a three-inch, sorry, three-quarter inch meter. Uses about 6,000 gallons every two months. Their current bill would be about $72. The proposed bill would be 7629, and so the change. Per statement, which happens every two months, would be about $4.30 or about $2.15 per month. And I want to read through all of these, but you can kind of scan down the list of the different types of customers to see what kind of bill impact they can expect per month. Okay, next slide. So before I move on to sewer rates, that was a lot of information. Part of the reason I went relatively quickly because that this is. This is the third time that I'm showing these numbers in this presentation, so some of it has some familiarity to. Most of the council at least, but are there any questions in particular? Is there anything that you think that first-time audience members might be wondering?
All right, Mayor Lamnet, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, please.
Thanks. So your your your, you know, change in bill is just regarding the first year's increases. I assume. That customers could expect similar increases in subsequent years, like years two through five.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
All right, I'll ask the rest of my colleagues. If anybody has any questions, if you do, please raise your hand. If you, if I don't see that in a quick amount of time, please speak up.
Great. Continue with the sewer rates. Next slide. So this will be very similar format. Here you can see that the annual operating. Budget for the sewer funds is about $3.3 million. The vast majority of that expense goes to pay the sub-regional. Operation and debt expense. So sub-regional is the wastewater treatment plant that is operated. By Santa Rosa, and so the city's services, the city collects the sewage. And sends it to Santa Rosa at the sub-regional treatment plant where it's treated and disposed. Next slide. Again, this is. We see an increase in capital spending. This one isn't as dramatic as water. The recent average capital spending has been just over $300,000, and the average for the next 10 years. Is about just over $500,000 per year, but you can see it's because of project need and because of the. Criticality of some of the projects, several of the. Projects are front-loaded there, so you can see there's a lot of capital spending that's going to occur from fiscal 23 to fiscal 26. Next slide. And I apologize, I forgot the context of this slide. If you go back to the previous slide, this. This picture, this the picture with the front-loaded capital was. Based on the needs basis approach. In other words, this is. The wish list that came from the city's engineering department based on capital needs. But once this was entered into the financial plan, into the model, just the. The recognition of the impact that it would have to front-load those projects so much. And to do them in such short order, we realized that the impact on the rates would be. Really hard to overcome, and so we asked the team to try to reprioritize and resequence of the capital spending as. As much as possible without. Risking any failure of infrastructure. So if you go to the next slide, this is the. Revised capital spending plan, so it's all the same projects, but there some of them have been deferred and the sequencing has been changed. And so you can see that the average capital spending is now is just below $400,000, which means that some of those capital projects actually. Got pushed out of the 10-year horizon. Next slide. And here again, similar graph showing the the top graph comparing revenues in the backgrounds to expenses. To expenses in the foregrounds. And again, anytime the foreground columns are higher than the backgrounds. Is a deficit year where you're drawing down on reserves and vice versa. Uh, when the columns are below the, the background green, then that's a surplus here where you're building reserves. Um, and you can see that playing out in the graph below with the red line showing that the reserves started out about three million dollars. And will be drawn down uh, pretty quickly over the next four years. Um, but then level out and, and um, bounce around, but keep level with the. Uh, target reserve levels uh, for the remainder of the ten year period. Next slide. So the uh, drivers for the increase in the sewer rates, um, again. The, the increases are similar to what was anticipated five years ago during the previous rate study. Um. In addition, uh, the sub regional costs, so the costs that are um, determined by Santa Rosa. Um, have escalated by about six percent per year. You can see that in the second bullet. Uh, one of the really unexpected um, things that happened was that. There was a, is a, a really large meter that. Measures the amount of sewage that goes from Cotati to the sub regional plant. And that was, it was an old meter and apparently it was reading wrong. And when, when meters go bad. They always underread, they never overread, right? The, the wheel spins too slowly. Uh, the wheel never spins too quickly. So in this case, they replaced this old meter and they found out that uh, Cotati had actually been. Uh, under reader, they had been underreading the numbers for probably quite some time. And so that was a um. I believe a fifteen or twenty percent jump in volumes that were measured coming from Cotati. So that. Um. Had a, a pretty big jump uh, in the expenses that were paid by Cotati. Uh, again, similar to sewer, there's, or sorry, water, there's some additional emergency operations and vehicle replacement costs that have been. That were created recently and uh, the, the, the increase in contract and chemical costs. Uh, finally, the last piece is that uh, some of the projects that are being. Uh, scheduled and that are being completed is in the interest of keeping up with the street, street paving program. And this is a, a pretty important concept. Um, you know, when the, the city is repaving its streets, um, it's really important to make sure that. You address any of the um, pipe replacement needs below that street before you go and repave it because otherwise if you repave. The street and then just five years later, you come back and you have to dig up the, the pipe. It's really a. A waste of, of money. Um, and so that the city's making uh, an effort to make sure that. Those uh, capital or the, the sewer pipelines are being replaced in advance of the repaving program. Next slide. Uh, so here we have the five year schedule. Again, the sewer has a fixed. Uh, a monthly fixed charge, a bi monthly fixed charge, depending on the meter size. Um, and then a uniform rate for flows which are um, based on. Uh, estimated sewer flows based on uh, actual water usage. Next slide. I kind of go through that one kind of quickly because those numbers aren't really that useful. Uh, I find this table to be much more useful in terms of. Understanding the proposed rate um, increases. Uh, so you can see the same table as I showed before where. Um, if we use the top rows as an example, the, a low flow, single family home with a three quarter inch meter. Um, had currently pays just over a hundred and twenty dollars. The proposed bill in year one would be uh, just over a hundred and thirty one, about a hundred and thirty one forty seven. Uh, every two months. And so that would be a increase of five dollars and forty two cents per month. Uh, and again, you can kind of look down the list at the different types of um, accounts to see how much their. Bill would be going up. And to answer the earlier question, same concept applies. Uh, the next uh, years two, three, four, and five would all see uh, similar increases to what we're seeing here. Next slide. And I, I'll wrap up with this slide. Um, this is a survey. That shows the combined monthly water and sewer bill for a typical single family home. So this would be. Uh, an account with a three quarter inch meter, uses about five thousand gallons of water per you, uh, per month. Or three thousand gallons of sewage. And you can see the current rates, uh, the existing current rates here. Um, down uh. Bottom third of the uh, regional. Pervayers or, or utilities and the proposed rates would bring you up to the more, the middle of the pack. Um, I can attest, you know, that a lot of these. Uh, utilities are either customers or I'm familiar with their situation. They will all be seeing very similar rate increases over the coming years as the city Cotati is. So. I wouldn't expect um, the city Cotati to start leapfrogging um, any more than what you see here. Uh, so I believe this would be your, probably pretty consistent with your position for the next five years. Next slide. So the um, the next step, and I'll, I'll turn it back over to, to Mr. Scott or maybe a legal counsel, but I believe the public um. Public hearing process needs to be done twice, uh, once for water, once for sewer.
Very good. All right, unless uh, staff would like to chime in, I'm ready to close the public hearing. I'll see if staff has anything they want to add.
Um, Mayor, Mayor, just to, just to conclude the presentation and, and, and make a correction, you, you. Need to open the public hearing, receive the protest, and then close it. Um, uh, just. There is a, a um, correction that needs to be made to the resolution that refers to the city council having re. Reviewed the. Water and sewer rate study back on April eleventh. It's actually April twelfth was the date. So we just want to be able to make that correction, note that correction for the resolution.
All right. Thank you. So with that, then I will actually go to see if there's any questions from the council. And I'll be looking for hands or listening for voices. At this point. I'm not seeing any at the moment. So with that, we will then open the public hearing. And see if you have any public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees tonight, if you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Or if you're dialing in, dial star nine.
We can't hear you very well. You sound like you're far distant.
I believe you were suggesting that I have to, once we. Do our tally, uh, close the public hearing, then we get our final count. We have to do that separately for sewer. And in water for both and return to close the public hearing. Is that correct, Mr. Barker?
Can you hear me now?
That's better. Yes.
Yeah, I, I'm really sorry about that. Um, uh, wh- wh- what I'm suggesting is we should open and close uh, both the water and sewer public hearings, the separate public hearings. And then the conclusion of both hearings after the protests have been counted. The council could act on the resolution, which is a single resolution that addresses both. Uh, rates. Uh, but, but the point is, we want to have separate public hearings for each of the two uh, rate proceedings.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Barker. And please jump in if anything goes astray, but we'll see if we can follow that guidance. And I'll begin by. Opening the public hearing on this, on the subject of the water rates.
Speaking to our attendees, if you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Uh, Mayor Landman, there's no public comment. That will end public comment.
All right, I will close uh, the public in hearing that. And Mr. Barker, we are doing the. Checking for the protest numbers though at the end or for, for each one separately?
It, they will be done separately and I, and I think it could be done either way. I think you could open and, and close each of the public hearings and then ask Kevin to um. To tout, ta- tally the ballots after uh, both are concluded.
Perfect. Thank you. So with that, I will close the public hearing. And immediately reopen the public hearing on the sewer rates and see if we have any input on that.
If you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Oh, it will bring that back. And so I will ask, uh, close the public hearing and ask if we can. Have a final count, our final tally rather, protests uh, for water.
The city received a total of a hundred and fifty six protest letters for water specifically.
All right. And may I ask, how many protest letters did we receive for the sewer rates?
There were a hundred and fifty seven for the sewer rates.
Makes sense. Sewer is more expensive. Uh, my understanding is these are of course approximate, but they seem to be nowhere near. I understand the number. Two, for a protest to be lodged is over one thousand three hundred and twenty three. Is that correct, Mr. Barker?
I do not have the numbers in front of me, but that number sounds correct in terms of the, uh, that, that would be the number that would be required to be a, uh, a majority protest. Craig, if you could, please confirm that.
Yes, we, yes, we confirmed with um, Angela Quarter, our administrative services director. That the current number of services is two thousand four, six hundred and forty three, two, six, four, three. So half of that is one. Thousand three hundred twenty two plus one, one thousand three hundred twenty three. So. Um, the protests are well shy of that number.
All right. Well, thank you. With, with those protests failing, then that means I will bring it back to the council. For any discussion and I'll ask if anybody has any discussion they would like to begin with or if anybody wants to make a motion.
I could make a motion for you.
Vice Mayor Harvey, please go ahead.
We, I would move that we adopt a resolution approving the proposed rates and superseding the existing rates.
And with the correction to the resolution of April twelfth, not April eleventh, correct?
Correct.
All right. Do we have a second for that?
I'll second that.
A second from Councilmember Ford. Thank you. All right. So we have a first and a second. I'll ask if we can have a roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
Yes. All right. Well, thank you for that, everybody. That then concludes our public hearings tonight. This does bring us now to the regular agenda and we do have one regular agenda item, item A. Which is a consideration and review of the draft six cycle housing element, housing opportunity site. So Mr. House, you're having. What we used to call in the fire district of rich and full day. So I'll ask you to take it away.
You're muted.
Well, I'm sorry. I was still on mute. Thank you, Mayor Lam. And there's another PowerPoint coming up and our. Uh, consultants will be assisting with presenting this item as well.
Thank you very much, Noah. Um, good evening once again to all of you. Um. We're going back into the housing element process to go over the housing opportunity sites. Uh, primarily what I want to provide in this presentation is an overview of some of the procedural mechanics of how the housing opportunity sites are determined. And then go into the preliminary list of the ones that we've provided. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, next slide once again. So the preliminary site assessment looks at Rena, uh, and this is a major feature of the housing element process. Uh, really by identifying where in the city housing can be developed in the next eight years. Uh, just want to emphasize that uh, this is fundamentally a zoning exercise. Uh, there's not a stringent requirement that housing is built on those sites. Uh, there's also not a requirement that those sites need to be developed as housing within the, the eight year process, although. It is important to ensure that there's an adequate inventory of sites uh, in compliance with the city's Rena. Uh, which is two hundred thirty four units, as you know, uh, spread across a variety of income categories, um, as we were talking about in the last uh, item. Uh, it's very low, low, moderate and above moderate. Um, extremely low is not considered within these four categories. But the very low income category, um, which has sixty units for Cotati is split in half, uh, with thirty for ELI and thirty for VLI. Uh, next slide, please. So when it comes to determining the preliminary sites assessment and how to uh, be viable in terms of reaching the Rena. Uh, there are a couple of different areas beyond sites, uh, where, where we look first, uh, to be able to see where the city is. Uh, accomplishing housing production, uh, and where uh, that number can be diminished in terms of the amount of sites that need to be identified. So first and foremost, uh, the, the most obvious one is, is your pipeline of projects, your planned and approved projects. Um, as long as uh, they aren't counted in the last uh, Rena cycle, uh, whether uh, through certificate, certificate of occupancy or permitted, permitting. Depending on how the city's doing it, um, they can be counted within the next cycle. So a substantial number of units are counted under that. Um, there are also ADU development assumptions, which I'm going to go into in a moment. Uh, these are spread um, based on income category that were determined regionally. Uh, with, with uh, there was a, a regional study that was done to. That estimate how, how ADUs are actually occupied on income levels. Um, so this is pre-certified by HCD. Um. It was computed by ABAG and uh, able to be used in your development assumption. So that is um, subtract, subtracted from the Rena as well. Um, in addition, uh, the first area to look in terms of identifying uh, sites, now the pipeline or the, the ADOs. Is looking at reusing ones from, from previous sites. Um, there is legislation that like places additional scrutiny on the reuse of sites. Uh, in successive cycles, uh, but you still have the ability to use some uh, from last cycle. Uh, as long as you can prove that there's some likelihood of development, uh, and um. As, as long as, as long as it can, it can be determined viable, um, in some other way that, that there's actually a likelihood that it's going to be developed uh, as housing. In addition, uh, sites are included that allow for housing. Again, this is a zoning exercise. So this is really looking at the ones where. Existing zoning would allow for zoning to be able to occur and a site is considered stronger if there's exhibited developer or owner interest. Um, I'll also add that in addition to um, owner interest, uh, there's been a regional effort. Uh, with a panel of developers, market rate, affordable, a variety of different housing types, um, that have gone through and vetted a number of sites. Uh, and exhibited whether or not it's been determined to be developable. Uh, next slide. So going into the calculation of Rena credits through ADUs, um, this is determined by looking at. The average over the last four years of the amount of ADUs the city has been producing. Uh, you can see on the left column there that Cotati has been producing uh, permitting three, three ADUs per year. So over the course of the planning period, this is twenty four ADUs that you can. Uh, reasonably assume will be able to be developed in the planning period. Um, so that's three extremely low income, four very low income. Seven low income, seven moderate income and three above moderate income. Uh, it's important to note that uh, if this, if these units are not developed, uh, then. That is a possibility for the city to get into a known loss territory. So it's important to have those programs that we referenced earlier on the evening to facilitate the production of ADUs. In particular, at a variety of affordability levels. Next slide. So this is the big chart, uh, that goes into really where we're looking at, at how to uh, assess the Rena. So. Looking at the top portion here, we have the pipeline of units that have been planned and approved. We have the ADUs uh, cut off the top as well. And preservation of affordability refers to the program that came up previous, in the previous agenda item as the essential bond financing program. That's the JPA program that's looking at the conversion of existing market rate. Uh, often naturally occurring affordable housing units to deed restricted affordable housing. Uh, so with this, uh, with that alone, you're looking at a, a, a pretty good um, share of the Rena covered, uh, without even using sites at all. So uh, with that considered as well, you have uh, three hundred and seven sites that could potentially be reused from the fifth cycle housing element. Um, additional potential housing sites that have been ident- identified with zoning that would be able to support housing. Uh, not as much on uh, housing that would be able to uh, be built and at densities required for affordable housing. Um, so those are mostly getting you market rate. And then there's a number of units as well, um, in addition to the ones that are planned and approved that are allowed in the Santero Way specific plan. Uh, so overall, uh, you're looking at a pretty hefty surplus in each category. You can see that in the Rena surplus or shortfall category, uh, you're still twenty units shy on extremely low income units. And the reason that that is combined in terms of the percentage of Rena met is that the state allows in this zoning exercise. For all of the lower income categories to be consol- for all of the lower-income categories to be consolidated. So with that in mind, you have one hundred and forty-nine percent surplus. But that being said, it is important to have programs that facilitate the production of extremely low-income units, because you're still on the hook to be able to make sure that those are developed.
Luke, can we just elaborate on this a bit? I referenced this slide in my previous and a previous product or discussion because it's interesting to me. So just to elaborate, we're allowed to consolidate extremely low, very low and low income for this zoning exercise to identify the housing sites, not for any other purposes under Rena.
Correct.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So in terms of getting into into no net loss, again, that's the law that says that you have to have an adequate the inventory of sites that are maintained throughout the housing element process. And you really don't want to dip below your Rena. So we would never advise the jurisdiction that you should have between your sites and your pipeline and ADUs, that you're meeting exactly a hundred percent of your Rena, because a site could develop as something else, and then you're in a lurch, and you have to find something else to replace it, which you can do through the APR. But it's generally better to have a buffer. So generally, we recommend having a buffer of about thirty percent or one hundred and thirty percent of Rena Met overall. So when we look at the overall income categories, assuming that every single site from the fifth cycle is going to be reused, you're dealing with a pretty comfortable surplus here. So really, when we go through the sites, we're going to be looking at areas where if there are sites that are listed in particular for reuse or any others that are on there, that really just don't seem like they they will work well. Those are the kind of comments that'll be really helpful for us for refining this list down to the ones that are most suitable to be included in your sites inventory. I do want to just pause here in case there are any quick clarifying questions, because I know the start can be a lot.
I see a hand from Councilmember Harvey, followed by Councilmember Ford. Please go ahead.
Um, could you elaborate a little bit on the ELI? Because it was said in the previous, one of the earlier items, that this is really only homeless housing and not really housing that 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 gets built by developers. Could you elaborate on that for us?
I wouldn't say that that's the case categorically. It's it's housing for anybody who has thirty percent of area median income. With the amount of funding that has been supplied through Project Homkey across the state, it is true that a lot of jurisdictions have been meeting their ELI requirements through homeless housing, but it's certainly not the only way to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ford?
Thank you. My question is about what? So what's the requirement for a site to qualify as a as a possible site for very low? And what's different about a site being suitable for extremely low? Is it an even higher density requirement to be eligible to count for ELI?
For all lower, it is, it's the same. So as we had discussed in the prior item, you're not designating sites for particular levels of affordability. You just have to make sure that the underlying zoning has the density that supports the development of affordable housing. The number that's given by the state is twenty dwelling units per acre. However, if a jurisdiction can prove that they develop affordable housing at lower densities, then they can use that as the threshold.
Okay, but but then why are there ten sites from the fifth cycle that are suitable for very low, but that aren't suitable for extremely low? But
That's a good question.
I don't know what the difference is. How does a site get in the ELI column? Or the VLI column, or the low-income column, if it's the same density, you know, requirement?
Yeah, Jane, you want to take that one?
I wish we had Elliot here so he could break down specifically why these were in each category generally for the the sites that we're reusing. We're breaking them down the way that they were broken down in a previous housing element, but I'm not sure that that ELI was a factor in the previous housing element. I think Noah said that it was not.
That's correct. It was not. And I think also because the assumed level of unit development from the fifth cycle properties is based on inclusionary housing. And as we discussed in the previous item, you're not likely to get extremely low-income units as a part of an exclusionary program.
Correct.
But these are right. Okay.
So what's important to understand here is that for the purposes of this table, for the purposes of showing adequate sites, we take that whole ELI, VLI, LI, and we lump it together. That's what you have to demonstrate is that you have enough sites appropriately zoned for all the different income levels of low income. And that's the twenty units per acre. So the percentage column at the bottom, or the percentage row at the bottom, where we've combined those three columns, that'll be throughout this table. So this is, this is shown more detail for you guys to see where the difficulties might be. You can see that there's a gap in ELI. Because there's a gap in ELI, I'm assuming that the analysis that we do for the need plus the units for ELI that were are available will show that there's a gap. So you do have to have a program to to promote ELI, but you don't have to have sites specifically for that income group.
Right. Okay. It just, the the table makes it makes it look like somebody made a determination for each of the, say, the thirty-five sites from the fifth cycle, that twenty-five of them were appropriate for low income, but not for very low, and ten were appropriate for very low, but not for low. But in fact, a developer, a nonprofit developer could come in and develop whatever they could on those sites.
That's correct. And just just to make it more confusing, the ADU, JDU numbers that were already done by ABAG include ELI units, even though they don't have to. So those were, those were selected because of that specific program. The preservation of affordability, we pretty much just did across the board, because that's what our nonprofits are telling us they'd be able to do.
Great. Thanks.
All right. Since we're asking a question, I just have one quick one. It was mentioned just before we started comments that our surplus is comfortably high, sitting at about one hundred and fifty percent roughly in terms of sites. And that usual, the recommendation is about one thirty. And I just wanted to double check if the recommendation is we need to trim that a little, simply because I remember hearing earlier tonight, or maybe it was late this afternoon when we started, but hearing earlier that there was a current concern about having too much property, too much potential sites in a element that Rena could, if it isn't all developed, may say we're not producing enough. Could you just speak very briefly to that?
The concern is actually that if you use, if you use all your sites in this housing element, it will be more difficult to justify the use of them in the next housing element. So you don't want to put in many more than you have to have in here, because that makes the criteria even harder next time.
So with that in mind, would we be better off trimming this a bit and saving some of this? Getting back down to about one hundred and thirty percent?
I think that's what the exercise that we're asking for you to prioritize sites that could be trimmed, so that we can get.
Understood. I'd probably be, honestly, I'll probably be looking for a staff recommendation on two. I think that would have been part of it, but that answers my question. Thank you very much.
And I'll just add, Mayor Lam, and so that that's, and thank you. I could, I should have provided more direction. We will be focused on the developer-owned properties that have expressed interest in developing, right? So the ones that we know, there's people who are owning them or wanting to do something with them, are the ones that we're going to recommend get put into the, as a housing opportunity site this round, knowing we have capacity built in with some of these other larger sites that maybe aren't owned by developers or haven't had anybody express interest on them.
That sounds like a logical direction. I could certainly support that. I just, I think in the future, where possible, and I recognize this is all fast-moving, might have been helpful for me to have some of this to review and been easier, perhaps even a proposed list from staff indicating that was the direction you wanted to go. But I think that clarifies a little for me, so I'm good. So with that, let's jump back into it.
Excellent. And I'll just add, since we're on that that train of thought as well, that additional sites can be included in an administrative B-list as well. So they won't be in the formal sites inventory. But if there are sites that have the adequate zoning that have been reused, let's say, you know, there are economic changes and a number of pipeline units aren't being developed, or there's a number of large sites that are included that develop as something other than housing. That provides the city with the option to be able to pull from a list that's already been vetted by HCD, included in the annual progress report, and it becomes a dynamic evolving sites inventory for the housing element. And if they are included on the administrative B-list, I'll also just note that they're not subject to the same penalties as a site being reused in multiple housing element cycle is if it's included on the official A-list, if you will. So just want to make that point before we go on, but this is ultimately the map of of sites that are the options that are on the table. The red sites are the planned approved and pending projects. The blue sites are housing opportunity sites, mostly that have been reused in the fifth cycle, from the fifth cycle. Those ones are outlined in yellow. The ones that were built in the last cycle are are shaded gray, and the ones that are removed from the inventory have a slatted shading as well. Want to note the, before, I know this is a little difficult to see, so we're going to be going into five different areas. Next slide, please. That really just hone in on some of these sites, so you can really see them a little bit more in the context of the specific neighborhoods. But just want to note this bird's eye view, as as we're kind of thinking about the affirmatively furthering fair housing considerations as well. Katati has a combination of resource districts that are deemed low and moderate resource. And it's really important in the affirmatively furthering fair housing to ensure an equitable distribution of sites throughout the city. So we do believe that with the sites that are here, we'll make sure to not concentrate them in any one particular area. But as of, as of right now, it's looking good in terms of distribution throughout the resource areas and throughout the neighborhoods of the city. Next slide. So first off, we're looking at, this is the neighborhood, West Katati, west of one oh one, looking at the the sites south of Lowe's. A number of these are housing opportunity sites that have been reused in prior cycles. And some of them are also planned for impending projects as well. Next slide. So this is looking at sites north of downtown, primarily centering on the church property and adjacent properties within the downtown area specific plan. The vast majority of these actually looks like all of them are reuse sites from the fifth cycle. So we'll want to be judicious about using these and ensure that there is developer interest or some other compelling reason to include them in the inventory. Next slide. These are some sites that are centering on downtown as well. These ones are primarily new on the basis of existing zoning conditions that would allow for housing. There is the approved La Plaza project included here as well, as well as some that seem unlikely to develop and have been removed as of this point. Next line. So this is looking specifically at the the Santero Way specific plan for the most part. Some projects that have already been approved, including Jamie Lane, the the prior items that you were looking at is also reflected here. Some of these are fifth cycle reuse sites, again, outlined in yellow, and some of them in Santa Rosa are also planned for impending projects. Next slide. This is looking on the south end of town. Again, some of these are planned and approved. Some of these are new on the basis of zoning, and and some have already been built as well. Next slide. And so those are it. That's, so we're returning to you for discussion and questions on these sites. Admittedly, I think that Noah will have the best sense about some of the specifics of these sites. And so this is really the opportunity for the council to provide local knowledge on the type of sites that you think are worthwhile for us to continue in this inventory. And just want to note that this is going to be an evolving process as it goes through into the admin draft housing element as well.
And I would just add, thank you, Luke, but just for the council to think about, just if there's any really like red flag sites that you think are very problematic, that's really what we need to hear right now. The goal is to take the, all of the, kind of the rubric of of requirements from the state to reuse sites, the properties that we know are owned by developers that have developer interest, and then any other input we received tonight, and use all of that information to come up with a proposed housing opportunity site list, and then also the B-list.
Okay. Well, that's a perfect segue. I'll open up to the council and see if we have any questions for our staff or any first. And I see a hand from Vice Mayor Harvey. Please go ahead.
So Noah, can we talk about them on the bigger maps? To kind of go through through with them and get your thoughts from the bigger maps? Would that work?
I think that's the best way, just to look at those those slides as they're zoomed in on different parts of town and exactly.
Okay, thank you. That would be helpful, because the bird's eye view map is a little bit hard.
Yeah, exactly.
And it's probably even harder for Mark on his, on his iPhone.
So Kevin, if you could bring the presentation back up and and go back, just, yeah, that's right. Luke, do you remember the, well, I mean, we could start with this one, but maybe if we, I don't remember which one we started on. That was the first zoomed in. Okay, that was it. Yeah. So then go one more. Yeah, this is it. Okay. So this is Ohio one sixteen. The properties there, five, four, five, three, four, five, six are George Akel's property right next to Lowe's. And then the red property is Monahan Pacific, that had the villages proposed on it. And then seven and eight are also owned by Tom Monahan. The five parcels to the south on West Katati are individual, single-family home parcels that are approved. The two gray ones are developed, but we do have three essentially lots that were recently sold. They're likely to develop, and it's, it'll be a ministerial approval. It's just a single-family house. So I think we should leave those in and count those. And there is developer interest on all of the Akel and Monahan properties. And Site nine, I have had no interest in developing, and it's likely Wetland and California Tiger Salamander Habitat.
Sounds like a good one, maybe to let go. I think I can hear you stomping your foot there, Mr. House.
It also seems that that one floods a lot, too. Just because of the, you know, the way the land is right there, seems like that parcel tends to get extremely, extremely muddy.
Correct. So I think the staff recommendation here would be to keep the three kind of sites north of one sixteen, and then the three single-family parcels on West Katati. We don't know exactly what the mix will be if they'll all make it in, but I think those could be the ones that are into consideration.
All right, I'll just act for and come to think of, before we get into deliberating on this, we're asking questions right now, but perhaps we can go to public comment, I'm thinking, and then come back and perhaps, Noah, if we just go through each area with this, you present it quickly, we'll see if we get approval, what input we get from the council, since these are all our neighborhoods and we have various knowledge. Maybe that would be a good go if my colleagues agree and let me know if you have anything you'd rather ask first. Is there agreement? We can go to public comment? All right. With that, I'm going to ask if we can go to public comment this item, please.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. Thank you. I'll bring it back to the council then. So we were looking at this first one. I want to check before we move away. If anybody else has any other further comments, or if you're in general agreement with what Mr. House suggested. I'm not seeing any hands go up, so.
Sorry, Mayor. I just want to make, I just want to make sure that, Noah, you meant, you said the three parcels north of one sixteen. You mean everything north of one sixteen.
Yeah, those three sites, exactly. I apologize.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. And I will encourage you tonight, everybody. I can see you on the list, but in case, if you're not getting seen and something cursed you, do go ahead and jump in like Mr. Ford did. That would be helpful to me. All right, Noah, let's go to our next area.
So this is on Old Ridgewood Highway. Site fifteen there is right next to, across St. Joe's from the hotel site. So that was owned by Steve Moss. He has indicated he does not plan to build a new Oliver score there. So I believe that parcel is actually listed for sale right now, and developers are interested in it. Site seventeen is the site south of that that has kind of the old motor lodge hotel development that's now rental housing. That's also owned by a developer, Cornerstone Development. The issue with that is it's, there's a lot of additional rules around displacing existing residents, and especially if they're in a low-income category, with some of those folks likely are. But I also know that there is interest in developing it. Fourteen is owned by the church, which they have a lot of underutilized property, but I don't know that they have any plans to develop. Eighteen is a underutilized property, but has never called us to develop. I think thirteen is also owned by Steve Moss, so that's likely that fifteen and thirteen are likely to be a package deal. And then ten and eleven are also owned by developers. So that's, that's my knowledge. The ones on the other side of Old Red, I'm not. So that's that's my knowledge. The ones on the other side of Old Red, I'm not familiar with them. I haven't had a call on them. And Damian, I don't know if you have any insight onto those properties.
All right, I mean, more specifically parcel thirty nine is owned by just a person, a petaluma, not a developer. Parcel sixteen is owned by Paulo Leva, which is. The same owner as between the gas station, you know, that. Gas station on the corner of George and Old Redwood Highway. And the hub cyclory zone music building, so. The cyclory zone music building that which is not indicated here is owned by Paulo Leva and Joel Rosenblum jointly. But this parcel sixteen right below is Paul Levas. I I would think. If they, if sixteen develops, the whole thing would develop probably at the same time, I would guess. And then parcel twenty one, twenty two. That I believe is owned by, he's a single family home builder, he built. The house right next door to it on the corner of El Rancho in West Katati in the last couple of years. Although I haven't heard that he's interested in building that yet, but he. He's been building houses sort of one of the, one of the time, one at a time as a custom.
Great, thank you. So with that, I would recommend likely keeping thirteen, fifteen. Ten, eleven and seventeen in the mix. And that'll likely give us enough properties in this part of town to consider. And even with the potential for the relocation or other issues with some of them being currently developed or occupied. We could use that into consideration as we put together the list.
I, Mr. House, I would imagine I would agree that most of the stuff on the west side of Old Redwood Highway. Probably you mentioned it might only go as a domino and I would think that domino would be kicked off by actually the stuff on the. Oh, excuse me, the east side by the stuff in the west side going, so you need fifteen, seventeen, some of those to go, and then I think. Mr. Leaving, Mr. Rosenboom might. Be interested in moving their property, but I'd be surprised if they did it to them, so that that might be. The wiser direction to go. But I bet there's interest there when that finally starts. Any other suggestion?
Mister Baron, a question.
Please do.
Site number ten, doesn't it have a a car wash on it at the moment?
It does.
Is that it's, but it's zoned to allow residential development?
Uh, yeah, mixed use. So so that's excellent point. I apologize for not making this. All of the properties on one sixteen and all of these properties are. These are in the downtown specific plan and the one sixteen properties are in the Graviti. Court, commercial Graviti corridor zoning district, both of those essentially require mixed use development. So we will be pushing for mixed use. But as we've seen, some of the new state laws allow pure residential in those districts.
Okay, thank you.
Noah, could I clarify your recommendation, keep thirteen, fifteen, ten, eleven, seventeen, would the others go on to the B list?
Jane, I think so, or keep them in. I mean, what I'm, I I need you guys to run it through your filter of analysis to see. Which ones would be best given some of them are occupied, some of our developed, some of them are greenfield.
Right.
And then use that to make a determination, but yes.
But but none of those would be an absolute no that you want to take off completely. I guess that was, that's what I'm looking.
Yeah, that's correct. I don't feel so, and unless the council does, then I think those could be all be in play.
All right, counsel, anything to add to that?
I've seen. One, one question about whether. That that means almost all the sites we'd have in this area are holdovers from the previous. Cycle. Except for ten, which. So it sounds, it has sounded from your earlier description like that's maybe not a good direction or a target. So. I'm just not sure if that makes it harder to. Get the list approved.
It does. One of the things you need to show is developer interest, which is why Noah is saying that these all have developer interest.
Okay.
I would just add to that, Mr. Ford had a good point. I would say that we're talking about earlier what might kick these developments off, what would make that interest go. I think there's, as I talked, some of the smaller things to the east across the street are watching to see fifteen, seventeen, thirteen. If they go thirteen, fifteen, seventeen, you're watching that hotel property very closely too. So there's probably, and in theory, from what we're told, that may be in the office, it's not unreasonable to expect we could see that. In the relatively near future. But at any rate, so that that does add to. There seems to be interest in. And once that starts, that would lead to having that go.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Please.
Um, so eighteen. Um, can you talk to me about that? Because there's an existing house. Is they're not on that property?
There is an existing, oh, that's correct. So it's just as we were, I was working with our consultants, I just identified. Essentially all the larger either underdeveloped or or undeveloped properties that we have in town. And I knew that there was going to be some challenges with reusing and a lot of our sites are reuse sites. So then I tried to find some additional relatively large parcels. That had a density high enough that would allow them to. To fulfill the the zoning analysis that we need to to show that we could meet arena to the state.
And is that an individual owner or developer? I I guess.
That's an individual homeowner.
And have they expressed an interest in developing?
They have not.
That gives me some pause since we had some issues. Around that on one of the other lots. All right, but you're not gonna, you're not gonna put that one on that A list, right?
Exactly, and I I think the only issue is just if we run into being able to satisfy the. The Rena exers, the zoning exercise for Rena based on all the other constraints, the reuse. The occupied and the developed constraint, then we're going to need some. Either really underdeveloped or undeveloped properties to kind of fit in that.
Now, now, because this has kind of come up before. Do we need to let these private owners know that we're putting their. Lots out there as possible development?
So I don't know if there's a legal requirement and Jane could speak to this, but I always advocate for full disclosure of any. Any land use decision the city is making regarding somebody's private property. So I would at a minimum send them a letter and have them call me and chat with them before we formalize it.
Right.
Okay.
Abs- absolutely best practice because we're not rezoning, there's not a legal requirement to notify the property owner. But you don't need them coming in at the last minute yelling at you.
And we have had that, so that's why I'm being extra cautious.
All right. All right, I think then we're ready to move on to our next area.
So similarly here, the only new property on here is nineteen, is nineteen and twenty. And so that's the relatively large undeveloped properties. Just past the corner of El Rancho, East School Street. It's, it wasn't a reuse site. It's kind of large. I know there's been some interest over the years and and conversations about it. So I just, I like this site to have in our back pocket in case we run into some constraints meeting all the other criteria. Because it's not a reuse site. But I wanted to get some council input because it is right in the middle of a neighborhood. I'm sure there's been conversations, you know, that have come up, even actually. In some of the outreach meetings I had, I talked to somebody who lives in this neighborhood about this property. So it's just worth having a conversation with council just to check it.
Mark, you might remember this, but it seems to me that that twen- site twenty or Damian might remember. It seems like that site has come up multiple times about possibility for development. Now nineteen has a, has a house on it.
Yes. There's a. A restriction or or or. Something on the street that leads into it. I forget the name of the street where. Councilmember Coleman, Mayor Coleman used to live.
Oh, Amber.
That is removed if, yeah, Amber, if twenty's developed, so. Mr. House, let me just ask you one thing about nineteen, twenty. Is the thought putting these on this list, the any way that it would lead to a developments? That is out of place for that neighborhood, which has a variety of single family homes as well as some. Biplex, triplex and even quadplex units, it has. A nice variety, but nothing incredibly density. Are we thinking that we'd have anything that would be? Unexpected in those open fields?
So that's.
Considering the neighboring property.
Look, it's low density currently, and and I do think if anything that came forward there. You know, because we're not having to rezone anything to meet our density under arena, mainly because we have some of these higher density areas that are balancing. Would fit that low density character. To your point, it may include some duplex, triplex. Especially if somebody was going to do a cottage housing proposal, but it wouldn't be anything more dense than that.
All right.
And I, I think, Mark, my recollection is that that also. Twenty at least is got a slope that would have to be dealt with.
I believe it does, yeah. Back of the lot does.
It's definitely.
Let me just look real quickly at my list and see if any of my other colleagues, Councilmember Ford, I see your hand, please go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor Lemon. Yeah, I I said some hesitation to put this on on the list of available sites and I'm unclear why. I, it feels to me like it's zoned for. You know, we're not proposing changing zoning, the putting it, including it on the list would not open it up to any development it's not already open to, so. I'm, are we just worried that mentioning the possibility will upset somebody or?
Well, I think that's a high likelihood, but no, I I personally, at least, I I'm not worried with the after the discussion about putting it. Me, it seems logical to put on, there's an, I think there's a reasonable expectation will be developed and. Without any change in zoning, I'd agree with you, that's not, I'm agree with you that yes, when people hear about it, they'll be upset.
Right, so I I would propose that we include twenty on the, on the actual list and perhaps nineteen since it's already. Developed on the B list.
Let me just check and see, is there general consensus from everybody? Can I see a? Quick round of thumbs or just raise your hand or or even just speak up or or don't speak. If you're happy with it, how's that? Is that workable? I I think we have a consensus on that one, Mr. House.
Excellent.
What about eighteen, twenty one, twenty two?
So, yeah, eighteen and twenty one, twenty two, we discussed previously, I think. There is concerns about potentially including eighteen. From Vice Mayor Harvey.
Okay.
This on there, isn't there, Noah? Doesn't that person use it as kind of a? Nursery?
You know, I, there's been, it looks like it, but there's been no evidence of any commercial sales that I've been aware of.
Who knows, but it does look like at a degree and it 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 changed from time to time, it's not steady state, so.
Yeah. And twenty one, twenty two, we definitely could include them, they're owned by a builder who builds homes, but. We're only likely to get two homes out of that, you know, maybe four if they do ADUs.
And above moderate.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely above moderate, yeah. Okay, so we go to the next slide. And then Center away and then East Katati, so. Parcel twenty five on East Katati is owned, it's got three units on it. It's owned by a contractor family and they have expressed interest in building apartments. And I've seen a concept proposal, I'm actually kind of surprised it hasn't come in yet. So that one, I think, is definitely a viable candidate for development, but it's it's existing developed, you know, it's got three units and so. That'll be a displacement. Existing development kind of gauntlet that it would have to qualify through. And then twenty seven and forty are undeveloped. Twenty nine is city owned. Twenty six is the site for the cottage housing project that's in process. And then. Thirty eight. I think is an empty lot, forty one and forty two are developed, but owned by a developer. And then the red site there, we just approved ninety eight units on the council, just voted to approve ninety eight units.
Do we really think anything would be happening soon with forty one or forty two, Noah?
Well, they've, they've talked about wanting to come in, but the Centerra Way plan has to be redone prior to them being able to do that. Because of the density issues we talked about earlier.
So what would be your take from a staff standpoint from this area? Which ones would you put on your A list and which ones would you not?
I think twenty seven, forty and twenty nine and twenty six on the list and twenty five. And then the rest, we could work with a consultant to see. You know, how many units shy we are, where we are in that, you know, Rena plus. Capacity. And then the likelihood of them being able to satisfy the needs, given that they're already developed and kind of use all those factors.
Let me ask the rest of the council, is that team, Councilmember Ford, go ahead.
I'm fine with that proposal, I just wanted to, I mean. Twenty seven and forty would also need the Centerra Way specific plan reworked before they could. Develop housing as well, right?
That's correct, they, that that is correct, but they're vacant.
Right, right, forty one and forty two have additional issues with with egress and things like that as well.
Correct, that's exactly.
So, yeah, that seems more likely, twenty seven and forty certainly seem more likely.
All right, I'll look one more time, see if there's anybody else that has a question or comment with this. If not. Do you have what you need on this area, Mr. House?
I do, unless Jane or Luke have anything else.
Ms. Riley, does this work for you?
Absolutely, thank you.
Perfect, all right, Noah.
And then this is the last slide, I believe, and so the Lasker Lane six lot subdivision you all are familiar with. That's, that's still entitled, but. The gentleman who owned it passed away unfortunately, and I think there's just kind of a lot of. Of struggles, he had investors and it's just, it's unclear what's going to happen with that, but those six lots are there and we're pushing them to record those. So that way they at least vest those rights of the parcels. And then. The parcel south of Cloather on Old Redwood is in for development right now, thirty four single family homes. Above moderate. Number one is actually the property I was most interested in hearing from the council on whether to include it or not. It's a large vacant parcel, but it's completely, you know, in a neighborhood. And I'm just not, and no one has expressed interest in developing it, but I just really would be interested to hear council perspective on it. Lot two recently was purchased by someone who is just using it as a single family home, they're relatively young family. I don't know that it would likely develop soon. And then. Thirty through thirty seven are the, are lots that were approved, but they have Tiger Salamander mitigation requirements. And that's been a real struggle, they're for sale now, but it's been a real struggle for anybody to pick them up. I do think it's like likely that they will change hands and a developer will purchase it at some point over the next cycle.
Mr. House, could I ask you, just so I can help orient myself on the property, wanted to hear from us on. Property number one off Myrtle, is that the one that has at least one, maybe two old? Kind of more like farmhouses and the white picket, old white picket fence in front?
I think so, I'm gonna.
And it goes back and it is a long narrow farm member kind of.
Yeah, yeah, Mayor, I believe you're, that's, your recollection is correct, it's a giant, it's basically a really large undeveloped. Or lightly developed property on the outside of Myrtle, right past the park.
That's correct.
So have we ever heard any interest positively or negatively in terms of development from the property owner?
Never, since I've I've been here three years, never said, never in my time.
Yeah. Well, there may be no, no fish biting on it, but it is a likely suspect in that location, certainly, in that size.
Okay, so that'd be my recommendation to to likely not include two. But to keep one and then the thirty through thirty seven as options because we may need them. Given that they haven't been used before and then definitely keep the Cloather or the Redwood Highway parcel south of Cloather and the Lasker Lane. Because that was a subdivision.
Just ask the council, is that sounding good? And I see hands in this order, Vice Mayor Harvey, Councilmember Sparks and Councilmember Ford, go ahead, Susan.
Uh, yeah, parcel number one, I I I'm a little bit worried about that, that parcel it. Without having a discussion with that person who it has never seemed to be overly. Friendly and overly. Part of the community, I'd be reluctant to surprise them with them being on the list. So. That's my only concern with that, I mean, they they have the whole property all locked, you you can't even. Go with all kinds of signs all over it and I'm just reluctant on that one.
Okay, that's good, that's good feedback.
That might be the one past the one I was thinking of. You're right, there's one just past the one I was thinking of that has signs all over it.
Yeah. I I think that's, that's the one. It is a long skinny and and there's like a house all the way up. You know, you, I I I can't, you can't even see the house. It's, it's way up there on on the hill up there. But yeah, um, because it's the one that backs up to all the backyards of Beronda there.
Well, it has everything but owner interest to our knowledge at least, but yeah. Councilmember Sparks, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I had a question about that site number one. Wasn't that one of the model properties that we used? Um, when we went up to the developers to give us feedback on the cottage housing ordinance? And did the?
I'm, I know property two was, and now you have me wondering if property one. Was also, I I'm thinking it was two and not number one.
I I think we had, I think we had one too, though.
Yeah, I remember that long, narrow one.
Yeah, we did.
Wasn't the long, wasn't the long, narrow one kind of on Myrtle? Myrtle, Old Red?
Yeah, that's why I was thinking it was number one off of Myrtle.
Uh, I think it's down fa- down farther there. Because, you know, you're, you're down past um. Macklin. So Old Redwood Highway is more to the left there, which is where that long skinny one was. Kind of across from the vets.
I'm pretty. I'm pretty sure it was this one.
Well, let me just ask the council this, so. Given we heard in House and. Miss Rock, and we are following best practice in terms, even though it's not legally required, making action like this, we do reach out, talk to the owner about this. Um. You know, if we did blast. It back. And there's a lot of. Clarity that we're not going to be able to use it. I suppose we could change to a caveat that staff will do the appropriate outreach to. Let the owner know and see if there's any concerns and perhaps. It's viable, to what degree may be viable or not in the longer term. Would that be workable?
That's a good approach for staff.
Okay, Councilmember Sparks, your hands still, did you, did you want to add something extra?
Yeah, I did have another question about these two, number one and two. Um, I. I'm kind of wondering if this whole area might end up being one of our. Um. Areas of affluence, of concentrated ethnic or racial affluence. And I'm wondering if having opportunity sites in that area is helpful. Um, if Jane can address that.
It absolutely is. Yes, and I was going to make that point that it would be helpful to have, even if you don't have a hundred percent. Buy-in from an owner, if you have a, and not really interested, but not disinterested kind of. Attitude, as long as the owner's not going to come out and say, absolutely don't want my site listed. I think it'd be really advantageous from an AFFH perspective to have a site in this neighborhood.
Well.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. Councilmember Ford, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Thanks. Uh, yeah, my question was along the same lines as Laura's. It's kind of about, um. So I I can see having, we need sites in this neighborhood, but do they help with that, uh? Concentrated. Affluence or poverty issue if they're all zoned, you know? They're not zoned anywhere near twenty units an acre, which they're not. So none of these are going to produce. Very low income units. Except via some inclusionary, perhaps, I guess that gets a sum.
Yeah, well, and the cottage.
And cottage, okay, right.
Yeah, right. I think that's so low to moderate income, maybe some more affordable by design, the flexes, that sort of thing. I, that's the only thing that's going to fit in with this neighborhood anyway.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
All right, so I I think I'm hearing there's some general consensus. Is that enough for you, Mister House? Does that work?
Absolutely. Good for me. Uh, again, Jane and Elliot, or I mean, uh, Jane and Luke, do you have anything?
This is perfect.
Excellent, okay.
All right, now. So Mister House, let me ask you, I I believe, did you say that was your last area for us to look at then?
I believe so.
Perfect. So I'll ask if you, if you have anything else you want from the council in terms of direction, I'll ask the council if they have any final. Comments or direction they'd like to give you.
I don't have any other needs.
And I'm not seeing anybody else jump in. It's, uh. We've been at this since four. It's after ten o'clock. I think we're all beat down enough that we're being a little quiet. But good, I think that works then, so. We'll bring this back then and thank you, everybody, for your help with that. So that does conclude our regular agenda. Having given direction. And this takes us to item thirteen, which is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, um, since we have been at this. Four, I thought I could. Y'all can enjoy an extra long report for me tonight. Um. But I will, I'll keep it, try as gracefully as short as possible. So, um, just to let you know that, uh, the budget, um. Will be coming to council on June twenty-eighth for consideration by the council. And um, yearly adoption, but um, that's coming up for the next council meeting. Also, um, in the world of public works, um, Pocket Park was cleared, um, recently, a lot of the, um. Uh, I mean, a lot of the plans have been marked for saving, but a lot of the other stuff was pulled out, just some of the underbrush and things. That wasn't part of like sort of the final planting. Plan, so um, that was pulled up at Public Works and the work is supposed to begin with the contractor. The middle of next month, so that's um. That's coming up. And um, just a reminder, there is still a free COVID testing um, site available weekly at the Cattie Park and Ride, Tuesday and Wednesday, eight AM to four PM. And they, um, they do have the telemedicine there, so doctor results, uh, or consults. And treatment are available to those who test positive and qualify. And appointments are available on um. The L H I dot care website. Um, on Friday, June third, we hosted our fir- our first free summer movie in the park, showing Encanto. And we had a. Um, approximately two hundred and fifty guests in attendance and it was um, a great way to kick off the summer events. We're showing two more mo- more movies this year, Pop Patrol on August second during National Night Out and Cars on September twenty-third. Uh, summer also means that camp is here, summer camp is here, so we had a great start to summer camp. Um, last week and sold out our Spanish immersion camp. And the Encanto Children's Theater Camp. This week, we started our Catati Day Camp and we're continuing to offer Camp Catati each week through August eleventh. If um, if anybody has need or wants to have their children in camp this summer. Other camps coming up include the Farm Camp, the Ranch, the Ron the Fleety Ranch, where children will get to learn. About the daily operations of the farm, including chores like feeding and checking on the animals, working in the gardens and learning about different flowers, fruits. And vegetables that we grow and also creating artwork. They're also off, we're also offering another session of the Encanto Theater Camp, the Tilda Theater Camp. And the Encanto themed gymnastics camp. So it's a popular movie this year. Kids' Day um, is coming July ninth. And the theme this year is peace, love and Catati, and we're celebrating the sixties decade with all things. Um, peace, um, peace signs, music and tie dye. The day will be, uh, it's. Your normal kids' day, full of fun, free pancake breakfast at the Church of the Oaks in the morning, parade through downtown, a talent show. Another live entertainment and of course, the famous diaper derby. Never be the same without that. Pie eating contests that I almost choked to death on one year and relay contests and. And uh, also a park full of vendors offering a whole bunch of different activities for for families. And then, um, lastly, I'll just say that Farmer's Market is happening every Wednesday. Uh, through September from four thirty to seven thirty PM in the Plaza Park and it features live music, beer and wine, fresh produce. Ready to eat and go dinner food, handmade and local, um, handmade and local goods. And um, so one last thing, thirty, twenty-fifth, it's a Catati Music Festival in the Plaza Park from noon to six. And this is, is a free event, expected to have six bands playing throughout the day with beer, wine, food and local vendors. And with that, I will spare you all the other small stuff. Be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you. It appears as usual, Catati is very busy. I'll see if the council has any questions for Mister Obit. And I'll wait just a second. And not seeing any hands, I'll thank Mister Obit for that, uh, and I'll jump now to item fourteen, which is our city council reports. Again, look and see if any hands go up. Anybody have a report tonight? Vice Mayor Hardy?
I'll be really quick. Um. I was at the Santa Rosa Groundwater Sustainability Agency and we had our. First reading of the proposed updates to the um. Groundwater user registration program and groundwater sustainability fee. So that was taken up. And we will have the final reading of that in, um, let's see, what are we in? July. So. That's the key importance from that meeting. That's all I have tonight.
Excellent, thank you. And I'll ask my colleagues one more time if we have any reports from Councilmember Sparks or Ford.
Not. What? I'm sorry. One brief one, the Russian River Watershed Association Board met since our last meeting and um. Not a whole lot to report. All the standard programs we're used to are continuing, um, doing good work. Um. One, I do have. The, the association supplies, uh, placemats to restaurants for kids to color in, you know? Um, and they recently redid them, so they're bilingual in both English and Spanish. I have a bunch. I'll be shopping them around to Catati. Restaurants in case any of them are interested. They're free to the restaurant supplied by the association. So if you, if you know of a restaurant that might want. Cool coloring watershed theme placemats, let me know.
So thank you, Mister Ford. Glad to hear about the RRWA and say hello to Andy there when you go and happy to hear that you're going to be going, going to the trouble of taking us around to restaurants, right on. That's the way to do it. All right, look for more time. Councilmember Sparks, anything tonight?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Well, I do have one. I'll try and make it brief, but I do need to do this and rather than report, this is. It's actually more of a request for the community. And I'll just begin by saying that. I've had the good fortune of actually being allowed to serve on Catati City Council for. Thirteen years now and. Any success we might have. Over these years has been wholly due to. The support of all of you, all of my colleagues and all the staff here, but most importantly. All of you in the community as well. Every time we've asked. The community's generally been very good about stepping up to support us, to help, to give us direction. And I'm mindful of that, so. I'd like to ask you all just one more favor, um. And that's this, that I'm asking for new candidates to step up this coming November. To run for council, as this will be my last term. Uh. I will be candid and admit that the job can be difficult at times. And that the hours can be long occasionally and. And for anybody who's looking to get wealthy, this probably is in the career I'd recommend to go into, especially in your retirement years. But I will say in all honesty and sincerity that my years in council. Have been incredibly rewarding in ways much more important than simple dollars. I've had the chance to help move my community forward and I know I'll never forget that. So now it's time for others, I think, to have this opportunity, and I'm mentioning this now. To give people adequate time to jump in, especially as there will be two open council seats. That's two. So information on how to begin the process can be found on our website under election information. But I just want a volunteer that I would be more than happy to meet or talk with any candidates or anybody in the. Audience in the city who just even is vaguely interested to. To help you answer questions and get an idea of what it entails, what's involved and how to go about it. And you could certainly private message me on Facebook or Nextdoor, or you could email me through the city at mlandman@catatacity.org. And certainly you can even leave a phone message on our city website. So there's plenty of ways to get ahold of myself or Councilmember Moore. And I'll point out that I will be open to endorsing and supporting candidates down the line. Once the field is known, uh, that's something I want to help with. So I'll just close by saying thanks to everybody. In the community, as well as all my colleagues here tonight, for all your support. And I'll tell the community, please, please consider this very carefully. Because you hold the future of the city actually in your hands with this decision. So that's my report for tonight. So that concludes Councilmember Reports and it brings us now to our last action item, information, excuse me, public comment on non-action items. And I'll see if we have any public comment.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Lemon. Uh, we no longer have any attendees, so that will end public comment.
All right, I'll come back for item sixteen, ask the city manager if we have any information received after the agenda was posted.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing other than um, on the items we've already discussed.
Excellent. Well. That moves us to adjournment. It is ten twenty-one. Thank you, everybody, for a long, but I hope ultimately successful night. I appreciate your help and we will see you all next time. Good evening.
Thank you. Good night.
Good job today, Mayor Lemon. Bye-bye.
Bye.